To the board on how, what we want to do. The staff needs to do it on time. This has been done entirely too long with nothing being done. This, this, this product was produced many, many months ago and I don't think that there's been enough action. There's been action internally, there hasn't been action to the board. Uh, there's not been a plan told to the board on to respond back to this survey. As far as I'm concerned, so there's a lot of good valuable information in here. We need to have a plan and that we have to approve if we have to, or at least some guidance to it. And it needs to be implemented. The staff needs to be responded back to their information and, and there, there needs to be things identified, otherwise it's, it's bad for the organization to ask them what their feelings are and then say, oh, thank you. So that's my opinion. Well, that's, and previously it was the HR.
So yes, it's kind of a combination, yeah. The main spearhead should be your HR generalist. I know with that, there were some changes to, you don't like employ the year, employ the quarter, kind of working back on what was said versus what didn't kind of work in previous years. A couple of changes in some administrative policy and I think we talked about like different gifting procedures and things like that. The survey was given to managers because communication in different levels were talked about. Honestly, I did not go back to departments to see what they had put in, you know? They, they were supposed to give Michael Ray this, you know, information. I know that we've had some transition there, so I don't disagree with Kevin, we didn't move as fast. Some of the major comments on pay and loggers naturally had kind of corrected it for, I would say corrected itself, but naturally had kind of come to conclusion on a few things because by the time we were getting the results back, we'd included the big retirement. We'd made some changes, the board had made some changes in retirement, compensation and some benefits. By then we were working through like changes of holiday, changes of vacation times. Some things kind of organically was simultaneous with some of the concerns. So there really wasn't much else on that, so. But short answer is yes, yes, the future ones with the spearhead between the department heads and kind of with HR and then any recommendations on some of the instruments.
One of the things that we definitely need to do is identify with those people that did not fill it out. We had a number of people that identified they didn't like the method of doing it. I didn't agree with them, their reasoning, but it's immaterial. We need to be able to try to get greater percentage of our staff.
So.
I was gonna say, I guess my question is, based on the survey, are there things you want to add or develop or modify? And team member list, I think I'm just gonna go back to Richard's bullet point. And what could be added, changed, modified that would have to do with long-term objectives that would be on that?
I'll just start by saying a couple of things. One thing, Kevin, is this was in August of 23, is that right?
Yeah.
Yes.
End of the year, I don't know exactly what. Yeah.
August of 23, if you're pleased.
So the first question is, in my mind, is do we want to do it again and then develop a plan for a response? Plan slash response? Or do we want to just stop and address this first before we do another survey? I think that would be the first question. Whether we answer that here or staff recommends, I don't care. The second thing I would suggest is that, along with you said, Kevin, I pretty much agree with all your comments. That we, the staff should recommend, well, I think the staff should try to assess or summarize what they're proceeding, what's perceived from this fact. You know, again, compensation, distillation issue is what it is. As I look at it, the one thing that sticks out to me is how low recognition is. So there may be some things that here's what we said, here's what worked, right? And it may be focused on more on recognition versus compensation, or it could even be more on communication. I thought that was a little bit lower. There's things that you can do with that around making sure that supervisors meet with their employees periodically with dedicated time. We should call one-on-ones, but anyway. But once that occurred, once that, you know, assessed and looks at it and says, hey, this is what I think they're telling us, what can we do? And you can't do, you know, you can't solve world peace in a year by any means. Then develop some things that, hey, here's what we heard and here's what we're gonna work on the next year. You do some things, then you've got your baseline, whether you should, we hope you wouldn't change the significance of it. But you've got a baseline and see if you start to move any other direction. And if you're not, then you step back and reassess. As far as I mean, I glanced through it a couple of times, but participation, I, I don't know what people think.
Did we do it with the third party?
They, they, they gave some reasons. I can't remember exactly where exactly, but some of the reasons was they, they, that I received from the, from the reasons was they felt like they were not be able to maintain their and, and I can't use, I can't say that word. They, they were concerned that they
Or there's always gonna be that concern of some degree. What did we do? Who ended up administering?
So it was facilitated through HR. However, HR did not push it out, collect the responses directly. It was through what we call Culture Amp is a platform we use for a couple of different things. And so through Culture Amp, he pushed that out and went back to Culture Amp and they're the ones that put them together. So HR generalists, I don't believe what you have to do to respond. If I had a voice, because we asked, you know, I could verify that because I was not a fan of the mission on the platform.
Fact that it was done on a computer and it felt with these people expressed to him, some people expressed to him that since it was done on a computer, they'd be able to figure out who's them, who did it. Rather than an individual piece of paper they could fill out and turn in and make sure there was nothing on there that had their identity. How many of those people there was? Cause that was an issue that I came, went to Michael right away. It's like, how can we get these people to talk to us? And that was, that was what his exception was of those he did talk to.
Well, I would be surprised if the computers are more anonymous than most anything else we do, as long as we explain to them who did this. The firewall would be different, but what we receive. So we may need to demonstrate that, I can't imagine, just seeing the paper process, that would be easier to track.
Well, exactly.
Exactly.
So there was two, Kevin's right on page 62. It states that first employees felt like their comments would not be anonymous and they would have repercussions. Which again, I think maybe it's explaining more the process, it's just settling maybe some of those fears. There's gonna be skepticism on any computer. But the other was, we still have a group of employees that are not fans of technology, but relationship with papers. Well, paper survey is not the same people that's worried about anonymity or, you know, being anonymous. Because paper surveys would be more, I would say, Kevin, could that be?
Well, I asked the question, I said, I told, I said, if you're gonna do a paper survey, you gotta make sure that everybody only gets one. So somewhere in there, you've got a sign, sign of identity and what's gonna stop somebody from making more copies? That's what these people have to be expressed. He and I, neither one of us had a solution, we just, we just agreed that, okay, we gotta figure out how to educate the people or do something.
You can certainly, just like you do your online surveys with your citizens, you can hire an outside that manages the entire thing. I know this platform has a way to be anonymous and it's not directly touched by whatever employee is, you know, leading that. I guess this is a matter of, I think we have the tools to do it. Culture Amp really is a neat program because there's even a, we've not instituted this module, but Mike and I looked into it. They even have a way through text interviews and stuff, but they will handle that when employees leave. So it's not one single person, maybe from the city, calling employees, it's a third party. So it is a platform that has a way to be anonymous, but there's just feelings that it's weird, it's what I take.
The other comment you made, uh, as far as the, uh, the objectives, I believe, uh, under team members, our third bullet point down, major internal culture and satisfaction annually and report finding and develop action plans. I think that's where you're, um, this is just a bullet point under that that supports that. That's, that's why I think you, where we fall within the objective, we have a, and whatever.
So thoughts on, I'm gonna have to give out mine, even for you folks, I said, neither Michael nor Ron and Zach. We should do another. Do you think we should do another survey now or should we work off of this first and develop the plan and action? Summary of the plan?
My personal opinion is a combination of both. Feel like we've gapped into some of the answers, maybe more articulate of what's happened since last fall. When this happened, then budget happened, you know, because the survey was done and then budget happened. And a lot of things did come first, whether it was simultaneous or parallel to the survey answers, or just things that weren't working, answering that. I think it'd be way too long to do another one, then you're like, well, why did we wait two weeks? So it's gonna take, we've got a new way to our generalist, you know, a senior distributor coming in, what's the best platform? So if we start that process now, maybe a few more months before you get it, and they end up being a little over a year.
So you look at your questions and answers and
Don't drop this.
Maybe tweak some of the questions or some of the things you're asking based on.
Well, you would, you would add to the survey, you want some similarities so you can do some tracking comparisons. That's what we did in that psych happens, but I don't think you drop this and move on to the other, I think one thing happens. Continue with this, what do you need to answer to this one, even though it's a little dated? And start the process of figuring out what's the best platform, what's the best way to do it? And start that because then maybe around holidays would be the difference.
Although Ross, I'll just say this, I agree using this one, but I also think compared to be doing a new one, we have, we have half the people base. And, and those that have still may be the ones that we really do need here.
They may change, you know, just keep it consistent and.
I can be, I guess I would just think this and that is that we're gonna make any impact on this generally from any kind of financial or process. We need to have that during budget consideration. It's July of 16th, so I guess maybe Kevin, can you do both before budget?
And I don't know that you know enough to answer that, but that would be the question on the table.
Kevin, even if you do the one, you at least can compare that if it was changed a lot, at least getting some kind of compare of that.
I mean, you can put together something pretty quick that said, we have done, we've heard you, we probably could have done a better job of formalizing the process of feedback. But here's what we have done, talk about, you know? There's been some, some education, I think, often to employees around financials and so forth. There's been, as you mentioned, changes to the vacation policy and so forth. That could probably be put together early. I think fees anyway, and then we can go ahead and get one put together, take it in September and have it back by mid-October or something like that. Is that reasonable at all?
Yep, we use the same, we, we use Culture Amp last time, I'm using it the second time to update where we left.
As we move forward and looking beyond just right now. You mentioned something that kind of triggered in my brain. Wouldn't we want this really to be done back in our hands in March, April? In time to get it back in our hands before our retreat and, and so that we can develop anything for budget? Not saying to push, I'm not saying we push it off all the way until March, April next year. I'm just saying that we need to be thinking about that cycle and, and, and how we work into that cycle to where maybe we do this one in ASAP, okay? But we maybe do the next one more, more around that September, or more around that March, April, something like that. So it gets in our hands and so we can respond. Or not necessarily retreat, because we can always get together and digest it, but from a budget standpoint, if we wanna do something from a budget standpoint.
Really only ask employees, we have a team, we, I mean, really, let's get the questions out. I think it took maybe a week or some turnaround for Culture Amp to have whatever they had back. So it's not months and months on roster.
I would challenge you tomorrow, challenge your managers and your department to right away get to their people and say, why won't you respond? Because that is something that is, would be nice to know why we're all getting to 50%.
Just to respond, you know, Richard, I asked us to pitch in, I think a lot of people work on communications, uh, just in my role with the city, but I can tell you that a lot of people, when we were talking about the survey, uh, the not having anonymity, but it was a big deal. And the others said, well, you know, maybe nobody's gonna listen. And I think maybe Michael, your president of conversations, um, also will impact there too. But it was, well, we'll say something, but I almost too much because it was me and then you had to be ramifications and encourage everybody. This is not what they want, nobody's looking to get you, but if you don't share the information, you can't correct it. So I think making sure that all the managers and former employees of the company are not being, being honest, to be honest, and we can fix whatever you think is broken. Uh, I think the communication part may be lacking on the last survey, that's probably why we had so little participation. In my opinion, we should definitely do a survey just based on that.
I think that, that concern about anonymity, concern about repercussions, the only way that we can demonstrate that that's not the case is we keep doing it. Don't ensure anonymity and there is repercussions. Because it's a first time kind of approach, so there's always gonna be questions until people get used to it. And if they see that we respond, if you go with that, you know, here's our, here's what we heard, here's what we're working on, and we're gonna get back to you with, you know, whatever the case may be, um, over time that will then.
We've done three of their surveys, but that may be 2016, 2017 and 2019. They felt when we took a break and participation's always, but I'm in front. It's gonna take the department managers, keeping that communication down to everybody who's quite important. It's not something you can make mandatory to make, like, no. That might back.
Wrong. Yeah. Well, there's, there's a uncomfortable, there's an uncomfortable juxtaposition of, hey, this is completely anonymous, but all of them, maybe the other one is you're like, it is, hey, my, uh, HR says you're the only one that hasn't spit up. Yeah, that's a problem.
We did keep getting those emails. You did keep getting those emails. If you didn't respond, it, it did tell you.
Ignore, ignore, ignore.
Right, but I'm just saying, so it did keep, it did keep emailing you and your thing did not come up. So they did know where you weren't doing it, which is also another.
They did, we did.
Right, but I'm just saying that, that how do your, how do the employees know? I think that's like the concept, we just have to keep reminding them, it's not management who knows that you're not doing it. It's the the third party, because yeah, we just kept getting the emails saying, we noticed you haven't filled it out yet.
But the ally of the third party is, here's a list of employees in your department.
You only gotta have some friends or something. Well, the only thing is you showed them, you said, look, here's the clause in the contract with Culture Amp that says they won't hold it. You know, that it is anonymous.
Again, it's all.
Well, it will keep going.
Also, just on the positive side, there wasn't a lot of positive in the, in the survey. There's a lot of the, you know, unfortunately, that's the anonymity portion of it, that's what I'm saying. It's bad because there's a number of these that their employees think they're doing a good job. And that's where, on Richard's bandwagon, I've never really been the 360 would, because that'd give them the opportunity to, to, to give that feedback.
So that's the big question, how do we respond to this survey?
Let's figure that out, I'm answering it. Figure out the who and the how and get the other one going. I think who will be a combination of.
But is that something that, do you have solely taken on our responsibility or is it more?
Well, I feel until my time, you know.
I'm saying that some of the work, we need to go with you.
We do have a new HR generalist and I wanna get her, she might have some ideas and where I leave off, I don't know. So team member list, bring it on to the finance or the other list.
Recognition, recognition culture, if we can come to any conclusions on how.
Are you asking the technical side of the stuff? I'm looking for objectives and the strategy side from the board. What is your bullet points that you want people need to?
Well, although it's not on there, because that one's out, streamlined hiring process. I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I added, I added it on the.
Now, did I bring up the tab was here, I don't know what all this was, but Victor Garmenting got hired on to the airport. It took three or four months to get hired on. That seemed too long to me, and I don't know, that could have been one. One month, but, uh, it just, it has seemed to be something that I weeks too, that's taken a long time to get people on board. So I, I knew that there's gotta be either a better system or we need to do better.
Just from a suggestion standpoint, that you spoke, this is a lot of criteria to you in some ways. One suggestion that I would make is that we transfer some of the responsibility of the new package paperwork and stuff to the department heads. I talked, I talked with that Michael, and we didn't agree. And I don't know if you agree to me, but I can tell you that there's a company that I work for, you know, 1300 restaurants, so it's not the manager who are responsible for onboarding and getting all the paperwork to get, we didn't depend on HR to get people signed up. We didn't depend on HR to give us the right form and make sure that we were doing it the right way, I could be wrong. But the general manager of a, of a Taco Bell restaurant was responsible for hiring and new hire paperwork and benefits, uh, different work being asked to do frontline employees of the factories, which I relax, I'm proud. But there may be a different ability to push some of that responsibility to the department.
So to add on that, that is one of Maddie's new projects. Okay, so ours is, there's a new project, in fact, that's new managers, so the timing, in fact, I could be, I can attest to this, with the new managers, you know, they'll be started and haven't gotten some of the things even to IT. So streamlining that when happens and what, it's having new learning for not only Maddie and new managers, but also what makes sense and at what level. So there is some type of work, how do we expand it out, but also keeping HR to make sure it's legally right and started. So that is currently being worked on, has worked a little bit, because I agree that there is an opportunity there. And as technology change and as we start using more technology, it's a lot less paper, which does speed the process up, but it changes who touches what and when. As far as the time it takes, you know, I can't speak about Mr. Armanis because until I know the details, but, you know, there are. Yeah, there's some slow processes that need to be worked on. Maddie has got some really great ideas and I think she'll, she'll happen.
Going back to Cindy who's here, I had spent quite a bit of time with Cindy on this. And some of the problems is, to be very honest, is the fact that, number one, if employee tells you today that they're leaving or they're being told everything, so, you know, that happens. Well, immediately the first step is there's a window of time that is said, okay, do we need this position? And if we do, do we need to tweak out or change any of the job description? You know, there's some time there, I don't remember what all the time, but then there's a requirement by city standards, probably, or maybe, or I don't know. But there's a requirement, how long we advertise in-house, how long we advertise out of house? And so there's a certain amount of timeframe there, then once we get the applications and we look at them, and then there's a certain amount of timeframe it takes to do background. So there's some, you know, once you start talking those things, it's like, well, Cindy, what can we do to shorten? Well, it takes so much time to do a background, it takes so much time, you know? So that's part of the problem, and I don't know, I don't know how we can streamline notes. That's, that, that was the biggest challenge that Cindy and I had, and we went through it, tried it. We did cut down on some of the times.
Do I background on every employee?
Some more traction, some are deeper than others. And that is, it's taken a day before she left her work, they just really increased again, use of different technology, different services, the turnaround things, certainly, so.
Because the more states they listed, they've lived in, the longer it's.
And that's a step, the more jobs they attend, the more states they live in, what they are, how young they are, how many jobs they've had. I mean, some of them get back after 18 hours and some of them it's.
Partly it's how responsive they are as well, I just recently hired Travis and he was in it within three weeks. He was very responsive, did his paperwork immediately.
Been done, he was.
Absolutely, so a lot of it falls on who you're hiring as well. Ron has a recent hire as well, like specifically Travis, he was ready to go and had cleared HR and fire analysis. Good well within a few weeks.
But it was also, it's all about just like my new hire and other new hires, that the process that they put through for onboarding, NeoGo, it was a nightmare.
Yes.
And it caused the people to turn away from the city because they just, oh, they get frustrated with it.
I've heard that.
It is.
Well, all the electronic, all the legal paperwork you're trying to do electronic, you can't get away from the legal.
I don't know, Devon's experience was the math, like 18 months ago, the application process was rocky, I, I don't think, I don't think, I'm remembering application onboarding, onboarding was annoying, I think, but the application process was putting in.
Devon hadn't done the onboarding yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Starts on the bit.
But you went through the application process and there's a lot of information needing to be input that it was tedious, just to say.
Oh, this is fine, I find it interesting, you say the one onboarding process was annoying. You would think the onboarding process should be a process that is something, that somebody's character, happy.
Well, yeah, they're starting to jump, but he's done, security policies.
Does that mean?
I know.
Well, correctly, if I may speak, I think Kevin, Michael Ray was here, he was kinda reclassifying how we do it. Where we build a computer lab downstairs instead of bringing them in and like sitting out in the field and saying, hey, build this, how can we do it? Keeping them under, in-house for two or three days, that way they have access to Michael Ray and Michael, and Gina for any questions. So I think the overall vision has started to clear up for us, and that was after me.
That was a big step for my career to do, and like I said, Maddie sort of picked that back over because we really got off filter on, onboarding, which means past, you've got the job, you've passed, now we're gonna get started work, gotta get your equipment, gotta get your paper signed. And Michael Ray was definitely on the same, he's like, listen, this is too choppy, we need to bring them in, their very first day at work is you're with HR, you've got everything you've done, you've got your key card, you've got all this, so they're not trying to do it at home after hours before they start. So that, at least the onboarding part.
And I know that Tru Bowman is the most recent one that, that I experienced with going through it. And the first day he got here, he went with Maddie, he finished all his paperwork, I thought he could take the whole day. And by noon, he was in my office saying, okay, I'm ready. So I, I think, I think we're moving in the right direction, but I can't disagree.
Had a little pickup.
Can't disagree about this. So is NeoGo still in play or do we just improve?
Still need to.
NeoGo, yes, NeoGo, there's still some technical stuff on NeoGo that could be improved, but how we responded with that technology has.
Get better, work with NeoGo, even though it's harder to work with.
Yes.
If the question, if the question, you need to edit this any further, I don't see a reason to, because somebody else may have this.
As we go, as we go through this afternoon, we may tweak it some more.
Yeah, if there's one.
All right, well, the next section is the economic growth development. This is basically optimizing, you know, long-term economic growth. I did put in, um, just something that I had put in to your packets a few months ago when we were talking about some different economic development stuff. H8 is really just projects today, I just, when did you have the information, not we need to talk about? Kind of tells you, you know, what projects we've incentivized and the programs that's been utilized. Other two topics that wanted to be on this section is, you know, talk about affordable housing, you know, what kind of incentives are we missing? Or how do we address affordable housing, any other ones? And this is probably not to talk about tax, use taxes or other tax issues and resources, which kind of go into. Financial side too. I know the one pending project from previous years was incentives, incentive guideline, you know, that's something that's obviously to be determined. You know, our incentive guidelines aren't broken, they're not. They need updated, they really need streamlined, have the last best known practice that we had, but they're not broken. I mean, it's obviously something Devon and Cole, you know, will need to pick back up. But I didn't repeat those, but anyway, I didn't want you to have all the projects that are currently incentivized and where they're at. Phyllis, I think that affordable housing was your topic and Kevin, he wanted to make sure we talked about use tax or other tax options, so.
To use tax?
Whenever.
Well, I asked for this specifically, you know, Phyllis had asked for it to replace the ballot and she. Changed her mind because of the costs. My, my problem with use tax is the way we provide the funding. I'm proud today that quite a few bond issues and tax issues throughout my career. Was able to pass successfully. But I didn't pass any one of them by starting the day before the election. Started many of them a year before the election. That is developing that, that trust with the citizens in the organization and showing the need and, and providing the information. I've always believed that an informed voter will. I know it's, the city takes a little bit different position than what my organization did back in the eighties and nineties. Whether the laws are different, like we just broke law, I don't know. But in my position as top administrative position, would go out and speak in favor of an issue. We didn't expend organizational money, but we didn't expend time, which can be construed. So that's a different situation because the position the city has taken is that our staff can only inform, cannot go out and say, vote yes. That's that's correct.
Statute says that too.
That's totally what statute says and anyway, but. When, when I was, I went out and presented all the information and basically said. Now, with that being said, there's nothing wrong, obviously, with us promoting. Programs such as this. There's also nothing wrong with the elected officials saying vote yes. There's, there's nothing illegal about that for sure. So, you know, developing a plan to how to sell the use tax, I think, you know, that's what we need. We really, we really don't have a plan. The, the MML provides us information, that's not a plan. You know, we've got to get out, we've got to get the citizens, we've got to get the organizations that are out there, we've got to get before them. We've got to educate them, we've got to get, in this situation specifically, we've got to get the commercial business enough. Cause we keep telling them, we want to put you on a level playing field. You know what? We've got, if those people really believe it, I've seen it in the town where I was chief at, that every billboard, every sign up and down the strip. For the week before the election, vote yes for our taxes. This is what all the citizens, I mean, all the, the business owners did. Did we have any business owners here that did that for our use tax? No. So either they're against it or we can't get them to buy in. Can't get that, then we're not getting support. So, we need to, if we're going to move forward, I say if, because I do believe we need some, some, some ways of some other funding. Proceed on at the level we want to proceed to the city on. And, and we're gonna have to promote that, we're just not gonna be able to put it out there to people unfortunately. Today's as compared to when I was in the business twenty years ago, the people today are no. Maybe yes. Years ago when we did it, it was like, yes, well, maybe not. So, the society is different. Plus this society down here is definitely against taxes. Where I came from in the metropolitan San Jose area that were more receptive. So, I've tried to weigh this back and forth, but the bottom line is, is a plan, somebody responsible to headman that plan. And if it's not the employee because of the statute that don't allow, one of us, citizen, a citizen's group. It'd be great if the chamber would take something like this on, but our chamber takes the position that they won't, they won't do that. I mean, I had the chamber when I came down here because my chamber that I came from took on issues. They didn't take on candidates, they took on issues. We don't have anybody down here that takes on issues. So, I think for us just to put it back on the ballot, we're just gonna see the same results. Do the same thing, you're gonna have the same results. If that's what we plan on doing, I'm opposed to putting it on the ballot, but no, it doesn't cost the same money. It's, I'm opposed to, we develop a plan, then I'm, I, I think we do it. Here's my soapbox.
If we just put it back on there. Yeah, if I've, I've done enough talking to people, it's uh. You know, it's great, Luke Haggard, he, he, he works with the chamber. He's a no and a lot of people that, that sort of, they, they don't really care that it brings them to the level playing field. They just look at it and throw money out of their pocket. And it's a never, it isn't anyone who wants to vote. This is some degree, at least part-time. What if we, what if we, where do we have the money? Let me put it out, we had one of the parks.
Parks, public safety, basically.
We directed it into the sewer.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter in direction if you can't educate your client on what it is because it's catalog sex. I mean, that's, I mean, it does matter in the earmark, but changing the earmark is not why I'm hearing the issue is, so.
Well, yeah, but is it easy or so when you're saying, well, you're right, you're not. This two percent or whatever the percentage is coming in, you want your, you want your rates to stay low, right? Well, this is how they help keep the rates low, at least the, this is being shared, it's not just hitting the home or just. Unless you do that, or some you can do earmark it in a way that you can sell it.
Well, unfortunately, I think the way it's gonna pass is you're gonna have to give people the old plan. Look, here's the situation, this is what we, and first of all, that's why we need it now. That doesn't mean the people are, because the rate, people say, well, you've got more money. Yes, we do, but the rate of income that we have increased and the rate of responsibility and financial responsibility have not kept in place. Because all, everything, now our, our income does well, but it's not keeping up with our costs. So what do we have to do? We gotta get rid of some of the costs and definitely we just have to tell them, this is what we're gonna get rid of. You know, this is more, you hate to be, you know, hold them, hold them over, but that's what it comes down to, because that's what we have to do. We have to raise the rates of the sewer, we have to eliminate some of the programs, or not do some of the programs in order to maintain a financially solid city. That's.
It's just a definitely just people and when you want good parks and shit and their, their response was every time was, we've got.
Do they understand that it's not two percent tax on everything they buy? It's basically online and out of state.
They understand they're paying more.
They're not paying more money, they're not paying the money that they would if they were buying it locally, you know?
If they, if they like, then it's convenient and they're paying less, so that's, you know, I don't think you can get it to that.
Then there's more needs to take a strategically look at what services we are going to cap, what services we're going to pull back on and what services we may have actually had to reduce it. Or to maintain a financially solid situation with what we have. We, 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 we need to continue with the services we have, you know, we have to continue on with them at least sellable. And if there's something we've got to start pulling back on, we need to maintain financial solid stability. And we're, 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 we're not gonna keep doing that at the rate we're going because our expenditures are getting greater than our income.
Boy, definitely we should hold the use tax off till we've got a really good plan.
And we suggested this, that's next year.
That, well, that's exactly what I said, if we're gonna develop a plan and a program, okay. I mean, this is not too late to be starting for an April election, lately I've been there, not there.
That's too soon, I think we should be looking at the next. Yeah, two years soon. I don't think we can get, I don't think we can get to that. So, you know, what's the point of looking into something that's gonna fail rather than paying it every year? It's a pass, is if we lose again.
Well, the. The other opportunity that we look at as well in the same, same area is, is uh. If, if, if we feel and we need to develop, you know, why we need the money.
Well, I get that, that right, you're right, everybody would need the money for sewer.
Well, you don't if you raise your rates.
No, we're trying to never raise the rates again, at least inch it down.
You have to see IT.
I've kinda already looked at rates.
Try tiny parts and then we can't do that, so. And again, we don't have any great ideas for how we're gonna get this to put.
I think the first thing we need to do is to create either the D or what's gonna go with. Where we use one police officer and negotiate. You know, you, you just need what, what you're willing to use to on the other side, but when we took. Proposals to the people, we showed what we were gonna do with the money, what we were gonna add. We're gonna replace the park, we're gonna add personnel, what were the services we were going to add? And you have to show them the value of adding them, adding the value of the park. What, you're gonna add one into the park, what are you gonna do? Well, here's what your parks looks like now, here's what it's gonna look like in ten years, because this is where the money's gonna go. And show them what you're gonna do. That's the way, in my opinion, that's what I'm talking about with the program, showing them what you're gonna do or. And hopefully we never get to this, but I thought seeing this organization do it, go in and say, look, this is what we're running, again, I relate back to. Five engine house, we're gonna shut this vision house down, we're gonna remove that, we can't do no honor for it. And, and these people here, this is, we're gonna take this service away. You know, this is what we're gonna do on your sewer rate, we're going to raise them five percent every year. If we could get this passed, we probably could get by with raising them only three percent. Those are the hard facts, things I'm talking about, that we have to be prepared. Justify and follow through, because if we tell them that it doesn't fail, if we tell them if it fails, we're going to do this. And we don't do it, we've lost, we've lost our, our belief.
I feel kind of being, fear is a great movement. Put all the positive, why not pick the same? We're gonna use this tax for this, to improve this side, this side. Great thoughts, people tend to focus more on the negatives than positives. So, we tag by saying, based on current data, if we do not pass this, we will be increasing sewer water rents again in twenty twenty seven. Not pass this, we will be reducing our police force by a thousand. Fear is a great movement, so I said, if we tag it that way, we might be much more responsive, be much more scaring them to agree, but you know, show them the negatives first.
We not do it to where, to just take what you just said, said, in order to try and maintain this race that we just raised, to not have to raise that. Uh, this is why we needed this, what we're running it, because then you're using something they need and the fear is. I just think your best option right now, partly wise, is to try and somehow pursue whether it's through fear, promises or whatever. It's a bad thing. I, I will just say this, I, I don't think you can get it passed. Great, plans are great, as much as you say that maybe my point is negative, that might be more effective, but I don't think you're in a position where you would need to come back with some sort of. Be quite. And so I don't know that I can look someone in the face and say, I, I might be able to say, we can't put it in a city pool, I'm okay with that, I could tell them that, that doesn't seem to matter. They may have to raise their rates for water, sir. Matters to them, I get that. I, I'm not convinced of what, we haven't raised enough with some other things in place that we're not, I mean, you know. I don't know that anybody would have cared if we'd have raised rates five or seven percent over the last four or five years each year, but the problem is we didn't raise it for, even last year, we didn't raise it at all since eighteen.
Yeah.
We could use it negative in our advantage right now. It's beer sucks. Yeah, that's fine, I mean, I, you know, we're supposed to go in that direction, I'm, I'm on the team, I'll support, but. Luke, Luke said it best, you're not gonna have money with forty-five million dollar budget and couldn't argue with me. Couldn't argue with me. So, you know, I think there were some points there to be heard, so. But again, with the borders, things that we need to go down that path and start developing that message of what we are not gonna be able to produce, I'll be all in. What do we have to do? Paying work.
April is like January, we have to have more decision and everything coming tied up by January or April.
So we've got.
Well, we did comment about getting in touch, some of us, whoever, getting in touch with some of the leaders in the community and talking with them to see if they might be interested in a positive manner. And talking about identities, no, I agree, the chamber would not be a good source, but pos, what about the border realtors? I don't know, just throwing that out. Now, I doubt if the marine dealers would be in for it. Because I'm sure that they're ordering parts from out of state or whatever, but I'm just throwing it out. I mean, I personally think it's, it'd be a wonderful thing to put in for an extra source of income. And I don't know, I'd like to see a percentage and I'm doing the research over our country of how many places in the United States do they really charge use tax? I guarantee it's a big percentage.
Well, the state of Missouri, I think it was, they finally have a majority of the cities, the population over two thousand, like. It's taken the cities a few years some, but more and more passing, but you're finding more and more. That have passed.
There was um, something brought up that is the state already collecting this too?
No, they're collecting theirs.
They're collecting theirs.
They will only collect theirs once, just like any other towns, once again.
They said they collect theirs, not mine, and not for the people.
Exactly.
Yeah.
State is like the. Yes. And so, if we act, they're, they're forcing state to. Okay, so the state is already getting their.
Yes.
They're not, they're not.
No, they're the legislature, they're not.
What are we talking about, two percent, three percent?
Two percent.
Two percent? And more and more and more purchases are being done online?
Oh, yeah, that's where I see the problem getting, you know, getting, getting greater, not lessened.
Because they are completely more leverage their.
They're collecting theirs and what we need to have also passed. So, for another words, like those.
When did they get theirs?
Last year.
Last year, when we, when we.
Might have been the same election, not the.
Yeah, I can. So what they, they did that was successful, that we didn't, they promised to put it on the roads. It is, in our biggest problems.
So let me give you an idea of the dollar amount, again, you wanna change the purpose of it, you know, but I think Kevin's right, I'm educating on what it is and why it's important, but. So, the estimates, the last expense I had are anywhere between five and six percent of the total sewer and water collection total. So, I think over years it wouldn't be a hard job to say if my produce. So I think over years, it wouldn't be a hard jump to say it might produce pushing half a million here in a few years. But right now, my estimates are around 333,50,000. So it's not seven figures.
Well, I, I just kind of look at the sewers, it's going to be an ongoing expensive thing. Why, why, it's not going to hurt to put that one still in there anyway. So, I, I don't know, in an effort to get maybe some of what you're saying, educating them and taking the positive routes, negative without it. And tagging it on to the, but the, the number one thing that people out there right now in those agencies are worried about is. So I, I think if we can team up with all these concepts, we might be able to get it passed. Again, I, I'm, I don't suppose we've got a good plan, because right now I feel like we're sitting here, so.
My whole thing is that, we're going to do it, I say yeah. We need to develop a program, a plan. We need to start implementing. One thing, I pick on Phyllis, but she just made a statement that we needed for additional revenue. No.
I'll just say this.
No, we don't need it for additional revenue. I know, but that's what.
Whatever.
I probably said the same thing. And I picked up, I'm like, no, we needed to, to replace the revenue we've lost.
But if you look at our revenue, that's what we've lost.
That's the problem.
That's what revenue is.
I'm lost here. I think it would be a water sewer. Transfer other ones.
Funds and revenue, well, here to expenditure, we have not kept up with the, uh, the cost of employees that we have. We used to be at the top, now we're in the middle.
Yeah, it is a P and L statement, it's.
So, those are the things that we, that we, we've not kept up.
I don't know. And, so what you said is, what you said, tag it to sewer.
Is the board willing to support it?
Get it to a spot.
I mean, we need to give staff the direction, we're just going to sit here and ponder it, and there, you know, something that's been in their wheels. If we want them to come up with a plan that, that we have to implement, which may mean that we, they are telling us that we need to be going out and talking to the public. And we need to go do that, uh, are, are do we reach out to somebody to develop a plan?
I would develop. Yeah, I was just going to say. Do you have a comment in there? All the things we want on the staff has to do, I don't think, I might in particular favor spending any energy against that. Sam? Now, if somebody on the board wants to put a, any committee together to develop a plan? Yeah, if you're not wanting to lead on, if you want to figure. See if we're making any progress.
We could reach out to Citizens Advisory Committee, and the members there. I mean, they don't have a major project going on.
Is that?
We need somebody that's willing to step.
You want to find your champion.
What?
We need to find your champion.
Yeah, and that's where we need to.
Take the torch, the way you want to take the torch, that has no legal requirements, that they can't, which is dead.
And that's where you need to get a, a civic organization.
What about Rotary?
Historically, I think Rotary has never, my involvement with Rotary is in metropolitan security even. But they didn't take stances on political situation. This one down here, Richard?
I have seen it, so that's been there longer, but I mean, it's not, it is unfeasible, for, for example, our current President Lee, Shuman. Or if Lee wants to make this, you know, something that gives that, I.
I think because it's community awareness, you're allowed to come and you're allowed to.
Education. So I'm saying Rotary could say that, but I haven't seen them do it.
They're not going to take a stance on it, but they're, you're allowed to come in and then.
Presentation, yes. It's additional audience.
Yes, it's just another way to get more out there, community.
That's the chambers.
Yeah, the chamber is a primary, because the one who normally would do something like this, but.
Like in the chamber, when we, and I, our county policy, and based in part on UCLA, back soccer fields, and it went down in flames. CLAs, it's got that. Camden and Chamber backed the tax increase, the OTC district, and they want us to remember. And that, and our chamber has always looked at those as cautionary tales of, we do not get it, we, we don't take a stance on, voting on anything that's on the ballot whatsoever. Uh, and sure enough, not long after we reaffirmed all that, the casino came to like, oh, it's our, and both sides wanted the chamber to weigh in, and the chamber said, absolutely. We would educate, we would put information, but the chamber will not take a side on something that's critical to the license.
Yeah.
And that's.
They've paid membership.
You were the max person in the chamber.
Yeah, that's right.
A year or two before me.
You know, when you've got paid membership, and maybe 50% of that membership, it would not be for it. And here's the chamber as a whole pushing it, and just all of a sudden, you're losing members.
What I always explained, the chamber would exceed us, Joe Rager and the O.C. nation, both chambers, and yeah, here's what they're about. So using the casino as an example, so I, I think you're going to have a lot of organizations that'll have that position. So to that point, I think, of course, that's where we should be able to.
I think until, until, until the board is ready to, and I agree with Richard wholeheartedly, to stage a game of something on staff. But I think maybe we need to keep our eyes and ears open, our champion. You know, and see if, if somebody, we, we get that person, our group, they want the champion, you know, and, and put something.
Look around, I mean, to call them one, these people are members of, speaking, players on the chamber that are out there championing things, but not as a chamber representative.
It cannot be a chamber, yeah.
Right. So the chamber wouldn't, but the individual members probably.
And I think to, to conclude on this subject, I think the same thing is true, whether it's a sales tax for the increase for just the parks. We talked at one point about the tax just from the police, and if any of the kind of things is the same, or I'm sorry, I had the same, so. I think we need to, before we go down the road, but therefore, it really exemplifies pursue opportunity through annexation and pursue expenditure reduction. Those are two main things that.
We kind of skipped, are we anything more on that? I don't know.
Sounds like there's no immediate direction for staff.
Affordable housing, I'm not sure.
Phyllis had brought this up, um, in one of your emails, and then surely talked about how they, housing, if there's any additional incentives, additional assistance that the city could provide. Really, to answer Phyllis directly, in the city, our knowledge, there's no direct grants that the city would help a private developer. Do, we do have one small incentive program, that the TV topers are took care of, have to build so many units that there's certain price range, you know, you get some these waived. We have that incentive program, but, um, to answer Phyllis's direct question was, you know, there's other incentives or other, you know, opportunities you want the city to, you know, how do we push it for housing? Well, it's really, there's certain things that are in control, you know, the amount of property available, the cost of property available, and it just makes sense for a developer. I really don't know what city, board would like city staff to research further than that, so Phyllis, I put it in.
Yeah, and I was questioning, which I think there is, as far as grants would be available. And publicizing it in our way to different investors or developers who are coming in the area, looking, looking to try to build something. And they knew that there might be some grants that they could apply for. I'm just pulling that out, I have no idea, but it might entice them. You know, obviously, it has to be real estate outside of, right here at Jose Beach, because our real estate is very, very expensive. You know, we, I mean, when I'm looking, you know.
Lots of information, I mean, there are legislation with Florida, or, you know, Richard, we're involved with CDC. Uh, you know, if a developer calls and interested in things, you know, we always try to point them in the direction, where they can get more information. Now, I have not spoken with a developer regarding housing in a while, you know, but we always try to point them in the right direction. As far as directly that the city can have a program or something, that's really what I didn't know of. For that's.
And then, and then I read, I don't remember the gentleman's name, I think it was in Santeras Beach, uh, that went into business of putting in modular homes, which of course are more reasonable to build and find a foundation or whatever, and to be able to, people could afford it more. Well, of course, yes, and the real estate, well, our real estate is so expensive, and that is the problem. Uh, we sure need it for our workers who are coming in day after day, looking for a place to live that they can afford.
Uh, affordable housing is possible. We've discussed this for years, and there's just too many negatives. These are so low. Basically, your building was, uh, construction cost taking a huge step over the last couple of months. I know we've been deciding nationally, what to increase, like the first, the material supply thing. Um, so it's.
I'm not suggesting the city put money out.
Okay, any, any, whether the city, state, federal, any incentive out there, basically, still not an offset. How much of a money loser it is, if you were trying to build a platform. Something we have been gradually trying to figure out ways to address years and years. Because we're in a difficult situation, partly because of location, partly circumstantial, our construction costs, uh, properties.
So I'll just, I'll just say that in 2019, I got involved in a conversation, like, you need to develop a corporate. Because, you know, this is something nobody else has known. Big shot. Oh, man, that was a big one. At the end of the day, I become president, I, we did get a grant, Camden County, we are having a house for this cell phone. Basically, doing this is reverting that arbitrarment into working cash. And the, to your point about margins, our goal right now is to do planners, it's too bold, try to be quick. Wanted is to start building housing. We have plans on how, as a nonprofit, we can get some grants or at least a revolving loan, so that we can start building homes. And the, but the challenge we have is, is that we're all volunteer board, and we need to be able to hire somebody to lead the charge, manage the operations. Uh, we think, we can, we hope, it's somewhere that the neighborhood, we can build homes at $225,000. And that we can, we can take that 25% that most builders would get, which isn't a market, if you play, and we can maybe fund that position, okay? Um, so basically, what we're trying to figure out is, is can we fill a need that the market won't fill? Okay, because there's a need, but the market doesn't fill. So the question is, what can the city go say to these two? On that particular part, nothing, unless we've got some land and I'm going to work with the county tax. The, the ordinance of being in the county, if there was some land that we, that uses a nonprofit, people, you know, taxes. But longer term, um, if there is, if they think of their participating jurisdictions, if four counties and all the governments come together, we can, so we can qualify for direct federal funding. But what we need to have at that point, what's called a lead entity. And whether, we've always looked at that as whether or not that would be on the age of beach or level, because they're probably most in our four counties, they're probably most equipped, would be that thing. That lead entity would get some funding to manage the money. So that's the impact, we're not ready for that. I wouldn't propose, as much as I'd love to have the federal funds come in here, because it comes to the state, we just don't get to eat. We all talk about NHDC and their funding. That's the federal funds on topic, but it's to go to the state, most evidence up in Kansas City and St. Louis will be quite honest. We're considering we see NHDC funds coming to our, even though for four counties that we represent, there's about half a million dollars a year that goes to the state. They find a way to use it somewhere else, or it evaporates in the administration, right? But, so what can, just to plan a seed, because there's no action items here. Um, there may be a day when the city can help by, uh, becoming, considering being a lead entity in the participating jurisdiction. There's a lot of things that are going to end up bad. Um, and that's all I can see the city do. Because we are, I, I'm just going to tell you straight up, you are not going to be building affordable housing in Kansas City. Ronnie Albro is the guy that's on our board that's building the modular homes, and his homes are over in St. Lawrence, uh, is where he's put them up.
Okay.
Very familiar with what he's doing. Um, and those numbers are still going to end up being 225, 270. That's a word.
Right, right.
And it's not going to happen here.
But we don't have it, we don't.
What we're going to have to call, if we, I think if we have any role at all, it will, we'd support folks that are trying to go for housing around the area, so that it can support the workforce that we need here in O6.
And that's what we need.
Gina's shaking her head, but Florida, I think, would you agree with that assumption?
Oh, absolutely.
Way down, way down A Road, way down, uh, 42.
You have all kinds of opportunities, but people who are at a housing study was exactly that. I mean, even our little Sage Beach, they had some recommendations for us, but all the people that drive into Jose Beach, more, we can help house those that we know will be driving in. Because we're not the Eltons and the Camden's where they have to go to the neighborhood or housing, or even on the west side. But if you, you drive down 42, I'm 12 miles past Salem, so 42, and more and more of those are going to be, you know, houses are going to, that's where your, that's where your commuters are going to, so, so Richard's right. We will be benefit, we could benefit the regional branch to help the, the region.
And my hope, my hope and vision is, in the next two to three years, if we have demonstrated that we're affecting enough to do things that end in these life costs in Jose Beach, might contribute to our. Most nonprofits and organizations have government source, annual source of government. Don't know that there's any appetite, I'm sure not, we're not ready for that, wouldn't even ask. But that's what I'm, some of it.
Well, so what do we do? I mean, we, we're going to have any new businesses come into the area more and more. And particularly after Oasis gets open. I just know on the west side, we're going to be people coming in, oh, I want to invest here, look at the trucks picking up, and everything's just jumping. Well, we're going to get the help. Were they going to get?
Were they? They are.
I know, I know, but, but I mean, it's, it's sad, because we can't, we can't help.
Well, actually, what I see it is, and I don't know what we can do, but, uh, hopefully, what we can see is the $500,000 less homes. Five, 250 to $500,000 range, hopefully, we could see some development like that, which that, in my opinion, takes those people that move into the $200,000 to $250,000 homes as they mature in their financial life. And they move on to the $400,000 or $500,000 home, that opens up a $250,000. You know, that's, that's a dollar.
Time to move on, the $250,000 home is possibly more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll be back. I'll be back to $20,000.
What else we can, other than, than we just keep our eyes and ears open and, and support, like Gina said, support the out of our.
Regional support, which is whether it's nonprofit or.
Running out of previous state.
Absolutely.
No, I feel Ryan.
Yeah, I think, what we can do is make sure that we support good, we can free projects, like if it was. Yeah.
Preserved.
At this point, I'm not sure we do a lot.
So back to the tax stuff, I noticed there was, we had the lodging tax topic, so additional tax, I sort of wanted to, before we go to the last.
So I, can you just tell me what your gut is on this? Do you think that, that if we put lodging tax out there, do you think that it would bring in as much more less usage tax?
I've done all my research on the use tax. I have no knowledge on top of my head, I could, I look at some financials, I could use numbers, which we want to know, I can figure something out. When I go back to any tax, it's like, what is the purpose, what's the need, what's it going to use for, like, whether it's the use tax, lodging tax.
But would Gina have the numbers by?
Yeah, I, I just don't, I just don't know on top of my head.
No, I.
I have to find some data.
The status there, well, they shut it down, I may want to get that data.
So, you know, I, yeah, what it would, and like Cole said, there might be some, you know, other legal research we need to do on doing that, but. Yeah, and what's, what's the uses and what we could do and not do, just like any other tax, what's the plan, and how would we approach it? I do agree with, in fact, Cole and I are going to talk about this, but obviously, you guys had two. You know, Branson has had a lodging tax, all these legalities are different. Other cities, it's not uncommon for your cities to have a lodging tax, you know, but I think as a regional branch, it makes sense, because we'll just take like those are, us and like us are. A lot of people don't know when they can ask. I think as a regional approach, it makes sense, because we'll just take like those are, us and like us are, a lot of people don't know when they can ask for Branson. And we could join partnership in representing the lake of the Ozars, as like those are most of the reasons, because they're sister cities. So explore more planning, a little more districts, a little more, you know, however that works out, but, you know. Somebody should be talking about it, because the best time to plant a tree was yesterday.
Yes.
So.
So, uh, so I looked at that, somebody's requesting, oh, records request during one of the breaks. Uh, Branson's, so that there is no one lodging tax statute in state. Branson, there's one for a couple of cities down southeast, there's.
St. Louis.
Joplin, St. Louis, they all have, each, each one is just a little, uh, example. Branson's is pretty reasonable, except that it's for, it's up to four percent tax, but it's, uh, you have to have twenty-five hundred hotel rooms in the municipality. We don't, I don't think we have that. Because we don't, we don't get to count, four seasons, they're not in city limits. Now, if it's a county, Camden County might, would, would easily qualify if it's. We qualify, but it's twenty-five hundred, and it only applies in city limits, Branson is a much deeper, I mean, Branson is incorporated, most of what people think of as Branson. We, O six Beach is not like the, we're just O six Beach, we don't have our, we don't have a lot, so, I mean, I.
So building a area is an extension, like. Grove two, three.
So I think, I mean, we have, I'll be honest, I think we have enough legislative priorities this year, and I think that, that. The region, that we should let the region take the lead on what to do with this. If that were not to be successful, then yes, we could look at trying to have a copy of Branson and create our own, maybe we look at something, I mean, to Gina's point, maybe we look at doing a. Six five, six five, uh, for, for districts, we still have to, and fix the flaws of the, of the TCLA tax, which is, you have to have a voter approve it, have to have either appointed or elected. Officials have to put a subdivision on private corporation. But I think, I mean.
I think the area is gonna.
Rather, just.
The session is gonna cause them to solve it.
I think it, it's, it's a regional problem, it should be a regional solution, if nobody will do it, then yes, we can take a look at a city, rather than a city, you know. If not great, then a good outcome, better than nothing outcome is, but I, I would say we should let the reg, see what happens regionally and. We've been, it's such a step process, we've gotta get legislation, now we gotta put it to a lot of people, it's gonna pass, then, 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 you know, so I mean, we're, we're a ways away, I, I think. That's the best use of our time right now, given the other, given the stuff we talked about tonight.
So do you, but down, but you, do you think it's feasible to like team up with like Ozark, Camden County, one, thing together, do the three of us?
Like I told it, it should be a regional approach in some form or fashion, who takes that lead and who's successful at.
We're reading, I mean, who knows what, how people would vote, I mean, I, I think we wanted to be able to do it regionally where if you have people who want to be taxed, be taxed, people who don't want to be taxed, left, left out of it. I could do that, it's. You know, sometimes I would.
Okay, I don't know how we'll still, I'm, I'm still doing it, because I trust our team better than the other teams, uh.
Just flat.
I'll, I'll put into your point, I think that's what you're asking, then, is you're doing some quick math when you're talking. Take the area, only way it's very, it's okay, four hundred one room, took the math, it's four hundred room. Uh, three hundred sixty-five days a year, that's one thousand four hundred sixty-eight rooms a year. Into five dollar tax, that's about two hundred percent, two hundred dollar per night, that'll bring in just in that one place, seven hundred thirty, how long a year? Use check.
Super, they're a hundred percent off, you know, that's still.
I know. That's just the area.
But, but even if fifty percent, they're fifty percent, you're broke, fifty percent, you're still at three seventy-five.
So, look. Having deferred for a little bit of time, but I think that I want to throw it out to the caveat back to you that. We'll wait and see if it plays out, if it does it.
Waiting to be discussed in the.
I, I agree, I think that's, that's probably the right way to go. Like I said, if nobody's gonna do it, yeah, we might, we should do something. Uh, but if, but we, we're also, we can do, because it's gonna be limited to what's the city limits.
So I have a challenge, you guys, like, which is just priority, you know, not really a tax issue or thing we're gonna do in staff, but you're the ones out. That know the other community members that, like Ozark County, it's like, light the seed of, somebody will stop, someone, seed of, what do you think? Brainstorm with your other elected.
Especially, I'm not gonna take credit for this idea, it really wasn't mine, it was, uh, one of the, one of the hotel owners actually brought this to me, it's like, basically, oh, one dollar tax. Doesn't mean anything, it would almost sue her. So what I'm saying is, hotel owners out there, I don't think are fine. But yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't want to do that here, I don't want to do that, but, but I also look at us, there's a way, you know, and, and. Trying to look at it also, this is an opportunity, we want to create that new revenue streams that we're looking for, well, geez, that's one place, you know, half a billion dollars.
Well, on top, I'm sorry.
Don't be rude.
On top of that, uh, look at our hotels compared to condominiums, and when I say condominiums, I'm saying if that. If Airbnb and Dr. Ball and Evolve would, would be able to operate with a license, I mean, we would allow them with a license. Then regardless, they have to pay a lodging tax.
Oh, we are both.
I know that, I know that, but I mean.
I operate a certain REOs and, and I pay my lodging tax like everybody else.
Yeah, I know, they, they can pay it automatically, but there's a lot, there's a lot more revenue from, to the condominiums versus the hotels.
Well, again, I, I don't think.
So my question is, is there a directive to staff regarding the lodging tax, or in addition to your financial thing on that topic?
Maybe both of them would let us.
I support the regional area, I torn too long.
For you.
I do, I think we all agree to this.
And I think there's just maybe not sit back and see what we can do, and in fact, I made myself a goal a week ago, is to talk to some of the. People within TCLA and surround and just learn more about it, because an asset was gonna drill coal, but you gave me a lot of information today on, on what went where and. Uh, I support it being regional, and I'm gonna see just personally, what's going on with it and what, is, is there some effort being done? Oh, some of the board members within that organization would be willing to say, okay, we've done a lot of good. And, and we want to continue to do good, and we found this problem, so how do we fix it? And it sounds like, maybe from what I've learned, because that was my question when I learned, look, it's, hey, it sounds like they need to get some legislation going, so that they can. Fix it, so that they can get the organizations back up and running and, and get going, because they've done a lot of good.
I'm sure the board of the CDB is also looking into, to try to do something.
I'm planning on visiting, like I said, some boards, not next week, but the following week when I get back to St. Louis, try and see if anybody's doing it.
Nothing's going anywhere about this, that's, until there's legislation.
Um, they do have a state that executed right now, so right now, definitely here, we're, we're still, they're being told to continue to collect.
They're still collecting, we talked about after one of the breaks, so, there's, it's literally true, but perhaps not. The judgment, we have rules that would always say that rulings have to have the, you have thirty days until it goes final, so there's still a chance of motion. Out of those motions gonna change the outcome, zero point zero percent chance, no. But it doesn't officially go final, I think in this report, it's thirty days or twenty-one, then it has to come back to Judge Daniels here, then she has to enter some orders that they've directed her to do, which might require her to have a hearing on some things. So we might be sixty, ninety days.
Enough of saying that the execution date couldn't be, couldn't give, give the program a year to, to tell it sunsets.
That feels ambitious, but, you know, it, it, end of third quarter, not unrealistic, maybe end of the year, I, too, I don't know enough about the system to really say that, but. It, it could be thirty-five days, it could be end of the year, it wouldn't count anything longer than that, I probably bet, if I was a betting man, I'd probably bet like another quarter maybe. But I don't know what the work they need to do to put in to figure all that out is, I read the opinion, but I don't know. How much is involved in what they're talking about, so, they, they are still collecting, most part. But where can that go, you know, and again, it doesn't directly affect our finances, it's just not.
It's gonna be sticky to take apart, it's like, don't pay on that building over there, the CBB joint.
Yes, we own it, they own it.
Yeah, CCLA or CBB.
CBB.
TBB, CDD owns it.
Yeah, yes.
Maybe it could easier.
Yeah.
They, they have to wind down their fair, what they were direct to do is wind down their affairs, right, and that could be as simple as block orders, sell everything, write, you know. Write checks to the accounts, I suspect it's complicated than that, uh, because they're probably wait, wait for all the remittances to come in, settle, settle up, we'll find accounting, I mean, I, I imagine it's gonna take longer than that, but. That doesn't mean they can't, I mean, first it would probably stop, like they, so that they know money, money's gonna stop, and.
But Gina, don't we have current contracts with the TC?
Oh, my God, I'm so.
As we're talking about it, we're talking.
So I am, and I am at, we have been invoiced, bills not been paid, I am, again, I'm like Cole, I don't understand enough the share of operations and this, this money was already incorporated with funds already received. Or is this program funded by money to be coming in, and then when the court came, so, I've left a big red flag, so two weeks, but like, somebody make sure they finish this, so. Yes, we do, but I, and the contract with us is the marketing program that started this July and ends next June, so again. I don't know enough about our day-to-day operations, but we have been invoiced, it has not been paid, information coming to see when and if that is.
Gina and I agree on wait.
So.
It's very.
A lot of people are like, please don't let this all under the table.
Well, like I said, I'm, I'm happy to table a lot of the taxes right now. With the caveat of, let's give it some time to develop.
The, the other one, sorry, other questions, Alden Rose has asked about business licenses for VRBOs in the past that's come up before, not here.
Well, it's our direction staff to pull up the research, and we can give you a note, right now, they are controlled through zoning. And homeowners association has control over what happens in their homeowners association, as far as our zoning, they're allowed except for certain ones. We have information on our website, we collect any business license that.
And I mean, yeah, I'm not talking about regulations or rules or ban or anything like that, I'm just saying it, because there's been, I think I've heard of the Massachusetts objection. Alden Rose just said they should charge them business licenses, and if that's the case, then we would need an ordinance to that effect, but if that's not, if that's not.
Is that common in other cities?
It's, oh, in most cities that have them, it's. A lot, it's more than just a business license, it, it could be all over the place, in like all the vacation areas, it's not just a business license, it's a short-term rental license, I mean, it's hundreds, if not thousands.
But not everyone.
Not everyone, but like, some of the, some of the coastal ones.
But not, but in our communities, none of, no, we, we would be, we would be typically, we would be typically, you keep saying it's, and it was lost, yeah.
So my suggestion is. My suggestion is, if some people are struggling about it, talk to them yourself, and maybe that's a future discussion, I didn't, a board member, board meeting, that, that staff has a little pre-planning, should there be more information? I'm not hearing a consensus necessarily, but doesn't mean so like that.
I, I just heard Alden Rose say it, so I didn't know if I was coming back up, I just wanted to make sure, I wasn't missing a directive.
No, at, at the end of the day, no directive, but I would just say this, we're, I think that if we charge VRBOs, short-term rentals, and physically ask them to do a business license. Then we should be looking at anybody else that rents, because that's business too.
As long as it's short-term rental on.
Why, why short-term?
Well, excuse me, no. If, if they're gonna be a thirty-day rental or whatever, we're just talking about weekends now and then, but I mean, you're talking about, what I'm saying, to make it on a regular basis.
So there's two different, there's two different distinctions, leave, leave between rentals, you've got long-term rentals, thirty days or more, that's, that's defined in our code. Short-term rentals is what we call, you have a choice for one day and two day, now, well, they're, they're rental companies, it's not just the RBO and Airbnb, decide they may do thirty days at a time, if somebody, well, like I did in my house, I'm like, oh, you're paying enough, you stay six weeks, but it's a costume. But I was still considered a short-term rental, and so when, Richard's right, it's like, long-term rental, that's considered different, that's considered differently in short terms, considering that it's under three days.
Well, I was just about to say, I mean, I'm not sure what the premise for having a license for a short-term rental is, but I'm not sure if, if that's a business, if, if the reason for the business license is because it's a business. It isn't a long-term rental, a business also, but I think there's.
Probably why you have to redefine those.
Charge it all.
Yeah, that's my point, yeah, I mean, people that are renting, renting houses out for people to live there full-time, they should have to have a business license too, is my point, and I don't, though that I want to put it in a hat, I don't know that it's.
It's not just.
I don't think truth is not quicker streets.
I don't like, how, how can we regulate and not be designated?
I was just gonna say, it's not just.
It's, it's a man there.
It's not.
That's somebody else's battle, it's way.
Once, the, the Gina should have the, it should be, like, I don't know that it's not correct, but she should know all of the VRBOs in Little Sage Beach that they are collecting from, it would be good to have that.
And then there's, now there's evolve something, another business that does the same thing, I just read about.
There's lots of platforms.
Okay.
They go on VRBO or Airbnb and they put in a, a area and they pull up, and they're not, they don't have tax, but they're gonna send your listing to you in the mail and say, you need to pay your tax. Well, as far as collecting money, you're gonna have to stack, how do you point it, you need an idea, what's the purpose of it? Is there a, is there something we're solving by trying to regulate something, or what are we trying to solve?
Our business, our business.
We haven't, we haven't do it, we haven't done it a lot, I think VRBOs, VRBOs should be included.
They are by state statute, I was the, I mean, I, I had to get a reserve license, I had to do everything, yes, I had a reserve license, I have.
Anybody can have a best, and not, not the rental, but you have to go through a, a, a third-party plan, I could go online and rent my basement as a rental, like that, that's been private. How are you gonna regulate that I'm collecting sales taxes on it? Lodging tax, you can't and never will, so that's why I said it is such, there are, there are so many different scenarios where we are just not in the capacity to stand. A lot of it is relying on, on them to self-report, we know a lot of people, if they're being stretched by inside, they're not gonna rent the basement, every again, they're not gonna self-report that income, they're, they're not collecting that tax, they're not gonna report that, they're just. Collect the tax, and then there's just too many different issues with not wanting to go down that road.
Well, I don't know how other places survive with that, because it's, it's nationwide, and, I mean, and it's a business, it's going into, into a community, and I think that they should be paying some kind of license.
Well, that's gonna be the scenario, so if I decide to rent my basement, we give this money, why do you get a business license for that?
I do, oh, all right.
Well, it's the only item, it's the only reason the item's on the agenda, because you want to charge them tax.
License.
That's fine.
Yeah.
No. But I just want to make sure you weren't, didn't want to go down the other path.
No.
Because I, I know that in, again, those that haven't looked it to be, uh, citizens, uh, survey, there are people near that want us to limiting VRBOs in the city.
Well, then. The grandfather closets already here.
Right now, only layer of our regulation is through zoning, if you own a residential house, you can do what, you can do what your residential house, you can build it, unless you're homeowners association, so. The control is really your homeowners association, condo association, there's not complexes that, we don't, we let them control, you know.
Why do you do that? Are you doing what Branson did, which I posted as well, David Branson did, because I looked into that, because I had some people brought to me, I looked at their organs. In a nutshell, and also just experienced it, because we've been down in Branson, uh, basically what they did is what Gina was saying, who's owning, you can only get a VRBO in the city of Branson. That's a multi-family development, can't get a home, because it's a single residential home, it's not zoning.
They don't allow them in neighborhoods.
Outside of Branson, outside the city limits of Branson, because we've got families going down there, we.
Well, outside of city.
So that's the only place we could get a big enough facility to handle us, was outside the city limits of Branson, because of their organization.
Yeah.
This organization brought to me, lots of people, uh, that said, this is what they all say to reach on. This organization brought to me, lots of people that said that this is what they all say to reach out. Do, I said, I said, if I could be in favor of any kind of organizations, that could be the one, but I'm still not.
If you wanna look at something that's even been done otherwise, Columbia District.
Yeah, I did.
Uh, I think one of them even said that you can only own one VRBO in their downtown district or something like that.
That's not true.
Yeah, it, it, I don't have any passion to go down it, but it's very interesting, some options that might be looking what Columbia did.
I'm not gonna take any action unless I get some direction or requests to look into something very, very clearly that there's no appetite to regulate VR nightly rentals in the city, and I'm just going to be. I mean, I'm heartbroken that you didn't hit me up. Tears in the jaw, tears.
Well, do, please include your city planner.
Yeah.
City planner.
Can we take a?
It's two fifteen, I was just saying, we got one section, which I know looks. There.
We can go for another hour too. You take ten.
I would say yes, we do. So hard, baby, they're gonna come back. Yeah, that's enough.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
Continue vote.
Really Mike?
Well, okay. You know what please?
So, Richard's service lift and financial lift I know kind of covers under these two. There's some other items that one just carried over from last year, a couple of things that did get brought up by some others. So really, I mean, I just go what modifications or additions that you want to add to Richard's either services or financials? We can tackle either one of them. There's a top 100 capital that we need to elaborate more on.
Are we kind of D?
Yeah, D is the.
D one? Okay, so yeah, I guess. What uh? We have we scrapped? Pickleball? Or?
So my answer to current projects, like he said on the master plan, that would be brought to the book. Like, okay, they put some engineering, what are the next steps for master plan? And I don't know if the pickables in it, we got current projects.
No, so we we had put the pickleball and the wall stabilization up there where the old sand volleyball court was. Did earlier in the year. The bids uh were not in acceptable budget range, the board did not accept them. At that time, we told the board that we were going to be reevaluating that and bringing it back to them and kind of giving them our new direction now. Uh, we are just about ready to do that. Right now, what it looks like we're gonna do, and I know we've talked to Justin about this and maybe even uh Alderman Ross about this, but we're looking at moving pickleball down to the second three. Uh, and then building a um dog park also on second three, which we're gonna be talking about in August as well. So, but because we're changing the location of it, we're not really ready to bid that out yet. And so that's probably gonna be rebudgeted in 2025.
But so I'm hearing is August that will be brought back.
That's coming, uh, so it's coming back when we talk about master plan.
Oh, right. What's the? Aren't you still gonna do all standard patient part? Yeah, we expect to add that back out the bid, then the next uh probably by the end of the fall. It is, it needs to be cleaned up, there's some safety hazards up there, so we're we're good, we're still gonna try and get that. That was all that we wanted. Everyone. So what I understand the dog park down there, if you guys are talking about that, is removable. Generally removable.
I don't know if I would call it removable, but easy, like let's just say two years from now, we wanted to change it. Our fields.
Taking the fence.
You're taking the fence down, breath, there's conceals from all of it. But I it's like major destruction.
Oh, long term infrastructure.
Which I little little concerned about, but probably once I see that, but I am concerned about putting pickleball courts down there because I don't think we should do that until we see the updated sports leisure uh.
Sports complex or feasibility.
The feasibility system because I mean, Justin had the conversation, can see the ball bad in the sun. I mean, for a while, I feel like very least, we can play pickleball, baseball, and I don't care. But at the end of the day, I don't want to take up precious flat real estate in a park shed until I find out where somebody can be more information about the kind of infield or football.
That I I as much as I do some work with the wall, I agree with that, if that is always sitting, easy to come back here and make any major mess. Then I get the dog park and plus the dog park, we're getting the damn near free uh best possible way to get it forward, so that was something that I had other weeks that could be consideration, who was planning it was if we wanted to change this back, we can't without tearing down.
And to tack onto that, like, I'm not sure about this effects, but seems like at one point we were talking a lot about peening or one of the fields of peening being a dog park. I could kind of scrap that a little bit. Well, the board was very apprehensive about taking down both of the fields of peening. And so we had recently got the engineering for the new uh pavilion playground and uh splash pad that's gonna go on the upper field. But the board at that time had given us direction that they did not want that lower field to go away, so if that's where we were gonna put the dog park and the board didn't want us to do that, then we were trying to find a different location. And then that's kind of where Justin came in and had given this option where we might have to have a local uh business that wanted to possibly donate some materials. So the extension, sorry, I can't keep all of these in my mind, but the quote lower field that right now we don't have any plan to change, is that right?
Correct, right.
Okay, so are they, is Indian used at all with anything consistently like Little League or is ballpark using it as an overflow? I'm not sure, I'm just curious. Um, I think it's used a little bit in Little League and I think we've had uh we had one other tournament that was still scheduled that we had previously scheduled in the previous year that had maybe used that field. But other than that, it's pretty much just open to the public for use, which I think is is what some of the board members really wanted to make sure was that we had a place that wasn't constantly going to be booked up with tournaments so that local residents could still use uh the facility, and so that's kind of the way that we are operating right now and unless we get some different direction.
Yeah, because it's that's really the only field where you just got four dads and their kids and like they're allowed to toss them all around and play the table.
And so, refresh my, I thought was ballpark, that's what happened, are they getting the field seven days a week or I thought they were only getting so many days a weekend? It was good for local stuff, otherwise.
Well, they they give them um seven days a week, but they're not technically booked seven days a week.
So they don't put anything, so like use it, but if they're focused, open that like field flat, this is beating work.
That's that's true to an extent, I mean, once we set the fields for for like an event that's like two or three hours later, we don't let people on them, but but in general terms, sir, you are.
Good, that's very good.
Since we're on that.
Where are we at in general?
Well, we jumped. Jumped to little three, which was the parks and airports. So we're gonna go back and address the service and the finance, we can do that and then add it.
Sorry, my head, I didn't see.
No, that's fine. Okay, so let's, is there any additions or changes to the service, bullet points that are up there? Is there anything that needs to be further discussed from there? For page. Page 11. I did add on that list, we talked about first um water, fire, hydrants. There's gas, no, that I really had on there.
So on services, I I'm I think we should open up a position in the city for a city mechanic to come in and be a role, I don't know if I'm called phase one, phase two, to where, you know, we're gonna try to bring all that in house, but I look and and roll with it. That person comes in, maintains a vehicle, that's up the maintenance plan for the vehicles. Then whenever the problem's going, bikes, bikes, I have to do all this all the time, I can say, hey, my transmission is overflowing, thousand this vehicle, we have to get, we got to replace tires, we gotta take this one in. Um, and then if we see that, you know, we we could bring more of that in house, buy equipment to do it in house. Great, sometimes you just need to take that and it can only go so far. Transmission's gotta get changed, okay, that's gotta get off source, the decision or whoever. But that's, we have so many vehicles that you're you're gonna save money long term by having one person doing prevent maintenance on the vehicles and you're gonna extend and bike with vehicles too.
So what a better direction for staff is research and in-house mechanic phases, all of it, it's like.
So how many days a week? Five days a week.
But I think if the direction is staff to research, figure out what the best.
Black third, not formal, we need a feasibility study, sorry, Kevin, but you know, do we, you know, what what? Things like, we have a, what do we not have that we would need? Do we have a, do we have a place for them to work? Do we have the tools that they need to do uh oil changes, check and break, check and break, uh pads, stuff like that? And staying away from the diagnostic stuff for now, uh but um I'm I'm sure that that Zach and I can can start looking into that if that's what you guys want.
Please include the police department, they own as much as staff of fun vehicles, it's not, it works.
Yeah, I mean, I have a feeling this person's gonna get here, get overwhelmed by the fact that we have so many vehicles. You know, again, you're gonna extend the life of these vehicles, they're gonna be maintained properly. We just don't have enough stuff. Our our people, our mechanics, can't rely, they may have some knowledge of it. I think it's a good thing to get this.
Been there, done that, and I have suggestions. Number one, you either are looking for a parts changer or a mechanic. Big difference, big cost difference, because if you're gonna look at a parts changer, somebody like me that could go in and change oil, very easy to see your tires need to be changed, very easy to see that that certain things need to be done and to what extent they do things, you try to keep that down to part changing because when you start getting into being a, what I've determined, and did a mechanic, then you start getting into somebody who's got to diagnose why this thing is, this this unit is not functioning, then they need to start getting into equipment and technology and computerization and all these other things that become expensive to do. So to have somebody who is knowledgeable enough in the mechanical side and maybe even used to be a mechanic, okay? But they don't, they maybe physically can't do it anymore. But have the knowledge that they know and mechanic is telling you, well, you've got option one, option two, option three, you got it. You get that and you're only looking at a lift because they're gonna have to get underneath these vehicles in order to change oils and do the and they're not gonna have to get into a lot of probably greater tool box, that's all it would be, they're not gonna have to get into the diagnosis. And not only just the equipment, like keeping up with the technology and the training ongoing, you know, they don't have to do that, so if you, if you go down that road, or which road you want to go down, but I suggest we look at the two different roads because the first one of being a part changer and the person that just does doesn't do the diagnostic, but it is a mechanic, you know, that does all the diagnostics. It's gonna be a lot cheaper and a lot more reasonable and not only cheaper today, but cheaper as the continued education that's gonna be required. Like, those are the two ways, I eons ago, yours when I looked at it, I went full war. Yeah, and and that's when I was told by why the people, no, 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 you know, this is what you should have done. You know, I already lost my program, I tried to sell it, it was too expensive. But had I went down the other road, it might have been a more reasonable way, definitely be a more reasonable way today because so much stuff is computerized and even more, my thoughts.
So looking at what other cities did right and wrong and already have these and then to do over, of course, they're the well.
All right, and I'll just add, just an idea, I have the uh old station that is Jay Booder. Just sit there and it's got one of the, one of the lists is driving, so it's too bad. So you just drive the car and it, you go down into, you don't have to flip. And it and there's a little bit of problem to the, you know, you sort of put also gas station, you've got tanks still in the ground. Why, or we're just renting it?
Oh, at least at least just leasing, not buying.
I don't know with the research, how about?
We'll talk research, could you, could you get in the research, could you have?
I mean, I mean, there's, let's say, figure out what space we need, what are options?
Because there's still problems, nobody wants to buy. Only the hands to get a tech field, we don't want to maintain your protection down over. You're gonna dig half way to China, but does that mean the canyon will change the oil? Maybe, well, if it's if it's it's probably, it might be more of a liability than this.
Not long. I just wanted to, bullet points, direction for staffing, one of the services that I brought previously. One was piggybacking on the mechanic. Is there any way we can try to find the documentation, he already had a job description, he had, he had worked, shown me some tissue, if you look back, it's gotta be some.
Is that still in that circle?
I know that that's a good starting point, because that's a lot of work that we need to do to this, and that'd be starting. The other one was regarding the digitization of records, I guess the direction is going back to staffing at the departments, these models, what their needs are. For staffing, but the part-time employees, senior employees, I I guess it's hard to, ballpark always can take you to, you know, saying digitize decades with the records, for profit, at least if it gets to jump off. Hey, at least this year, three months, we're gonna have somebody with full-time job digitizing that. From whoever. Yeah, just to kind of think that uh I can have a C, like maybe a quarterly update. Well, we know we're 50% 40% left to go, or live, well, we, just so we can ask if you're right, we're still doing it. Uh, you know, and then data will also show there that they need more help.
And one other question, with that transition, sewer system maintenance proactive? I'm just not sure what that entails, or what direction you would step on that. Is it, is it basically like a need for seeing equipment that I've done this stuff before? To to utilize and get a better idea of where we are with our systems? Didn't we purchase or didn't you tell there was some type of state camera?
There's not many pieces, but the way I would, way I think what I would do to tell staff is if this is an objective for the board, then staff's job is to interpret that, how do you make that happen? Budgeted items or resource requests, we're ready here in the next few months to be tackling what that looks like. So that's how I would interpret this, it's like, if this is the end goal, how do you get it done and how does that impact the way you're questioning work?
Different plan, longer timeframe, why or where to put?
I think the biggest impact that we can have in a particular area is is kind of got two pieces, so one of them Zach's already worked on, that is fully inventory at every station. So Zach's on that, and that's actually in his his own personal goals that he had, he had put in place. Number two is one that we have parked on for a couple of years now, and that is more camera work. More and more camera work and make no mistake, we have put that in the budget several years and it never actually makes it out of the budget process. So we will put that in the budget again, I can guarantee you, uh and we will see our.
I heard a lot of discussion about this after when you were writing a couple of books that you brought to the board, and it's basically more of an advance. It was basically be able to really get down into the systems and see what it bears, what issues were with each of them, so.
Along that same line, I would, I would have to concur that I I don't have any problem with that as being an objective, I have a problem with that two years, okay? I would like to leave that, I would like to, I would just like to say from my perspective that I'm if if it's gonna be three years, just tell me why, it's gonna be a year and a half. Two years is the number that was put up there, okay? I I would rather put the the objective up there, let staff come back and plan and help check, so.
I'm not locked in to.
It's gonna be the the tools required versus the time it's gonna take, like required equals a one-year project, three-year project, and so.
And part of that's gonna depend on the server, on the on the consultant that we work that we get back, which is due back when.
In a few months, when the public bar assessment.
Said the, either the first or second meeting in September, Zach, is that correct? It was originally supposed.
Some of that, some of that may be depending on what they're, they come back with and. I'm I'm in favor of moving moving in that direction, but I'm not locked in on two years.
Well, and I don't know, I don't want to make sure, I want to make sure there's no confusion. The camera work is something that's ongoing. I think tentatively, Zach and I feel like we could camera our, we could split up our camera work that needs to happen both in the pressurized system and in the gravity system and do that over uh like a five-year cycle to look at everything. Uh, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little less, but you know, that's that's the way we had originally planned on budgeting was quarter of it a year. And then whatever you find within that quarter, you address in the next budget, or maybe you maybe have to address right when, you know what I mean? But but that is the methodology that we have been using and and unless I'm given some different directions, it's the same method we're.
Well, that's different than the sewer system maintenance, we pro active for two years.
Proactive for two years? I mean, do you consider starting that program? Starting that program as a proactive approach, if the board wants us to spend all the money that we would need to spend on camera work for two years, then we're happy to do that, but it's not.
It's just a camera, that's not just a camera ready, I think that we're looking at that the hot vision is going to be in that transition sources.
Right, but it has to start with that.
Well, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that's not all of it.
Sorry, it has to start with what I apologize. Well, in order for us to yeah, in order for us to repair problems, we have to go in and find those problems and figure out exactly where they are and that starts with the camera. Okay, so I'm not sure, I think.
I think we're not, I don't think we're on the same page here.
Right, um, in my mind, what I watch and see is our huge expenditures, especially when we're doing certain work. Um, is our pumps and our control panels, okay? So that proactive approach wasn't, well, I probably didn't consider as much around pipe. That proactive approach up there is predominantly around electrical pumps and control panels, pumps are electric too, right? Because I envision, Zach, you can jump in there, it's not true, but what I envision is is that you know, everybody, plus all of us have a mechanical inspection for our house. This situation is wrapped, it goes down to a mechanic, but that pump and that control panel can visit it. I don't know what the frequency is, but once a year, for example, whatever you all determine is the right time. And then we got sanders over here, biggest one, they get looked at every week for our life. But we need to figure out what does that mean? As far as the pipe, that's okay too, that's proactive too, I don't disagree, that's not being considered. But the fact that what I think I could just say, we want on the bike first, uh based on all the various bikes, I'm surprised we're going that way. Yeah, please don't misunderstand, sir, I I said there was two things that need to happen. Okay, one is the station inventory, the station inventory includes a panel and the the can for somewhere around 1,250 stations. Uh, and inventory. Make sure I'm inventory, sorry, now that's just what we have. Right, right, that doesn't necessarily mean we're visiting that in a period, I can find it. Well, inventorying them, identifying the problems with each of them and then putting them on a a a preventative main bus schedule to re to revisit them, each one of them, with the goal being that we revisit every station that we have every year, some of them obviously you're gonna have to visit more often. But if we can get to a point where we can visit every station once a year, we're gonna be making some progress. We, I I attempted to do that uh when we, when we were short a lot of staff, I couldn't, I I think the best I ever did was 500 stations a year, I didn't have half the staff that Zach has now though, and we didn't have this assessment that we're gonna be dealing with coming up. So we're moving in the right direction, we're 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 hopefully going to start seeing some progress here now that we have hired our our final person in uh and we're we're on the cusp of seeing what this assessment is gonna tell us, so I truly do think we're on the same page.
Okay, that's fine.
And so then.
And what what's being said here is, at this point, is we want that done in two years. Now, I'm I'm personally, Doug Richard, now I'm saying I'm not in stone two years, but if it's not two years for me, I need to know what it's gonna be, two and a half years, you know, three years or what? Richard says two years, I we're okay here. But well, yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying it's a goal, a goal is, for me, is for you, you guys to sit down and figure out what the timeframe is, not to sit down and say it's gotta be done in two years. Develop your time, if timeframe is different than two years, then you need to let us know, especially if you need to, especially if you're gonna be in five years. Because then we're definitely too far off and we need to know why you can't do less time.
That's interesting.
Both the goals, every, to visit every station every year, then Zach might just need to see like, what time does that, what manpower does that take for him? If he has enough people or if he needs more people or.
Actually, Richard, I can't talk, uh, for that that's, that's old. We need to, if you guys come back, look, the goal is wrong.
Just like the revenue, the sales tax turns is much, twice as much as state, that's where we want to get there, what we need to do to get there, we may not hit it, but.
So I guess I'd ask Mike handle this. Is that two years seem unreasonable at this point? Not for prepared to answer that question just yet, but I think we, I think we can be prepared to answer it by. I don't know if we're prepared to answer that question just yet, but I think we, I think we can be prepared to answer it by a budget uh workshop.
Zach says yes.
We've been.
Did you guess what, it's reasonable? It's unreasonable?
I think it's in two years, we can, we can have an idea of the amount of problem we have in restarting that approach. But to think that we're gonna go through and start preventative replumbing cans and setting new panels, dumping a lot of money back on the station to get it upgraded, to have. Which started moving forward in two year, to be on that track? Yeah, that's doable, but to think that in two years, you're just gonna be there at that stage, I don't see that feasible. Talking about a lot of time, a lot of money.
And that's where I was coming from, because that's why I think, that's why I was thinking that, because there's a lot of our stations that are missing stuff. That's been overlooked and and misses hasn't. So if they approach a can or an area and they and they inventory it and see what needs to be done, they're not just gonna be able to move on to the next one. Spend some time and money. That's why I was wondering, to get to that point might be longer. But then after they're at that point, can they maintain it? In a two year process?
Two years to be starting to be on a preventative maintenance approach, not moving on. Well, I guess in my mind, two years, so it'll just always be at the end of twenty. By the end of twenty six, starting twenty seven, we would have things in place where we could visit everything else here. That's what I think.
Not not that we would have to program it in place for two years.
Maybe everything that we find in between as we're transitioning, we are gonna fix. But we don't have to run across it where we didn't get a chance to get it completely fixed. But the idea generally here is is that if within a couple of years, we're performing more preventative maintenance than we are preventing, um, you know, at will or failure maintenance. I think that's the general idea, right?
Now, and and that's what, we're also not getting into a station station where there's supposed to be three pumps and there and there's two.
I owe you that by then.
We are, we already got that behind us.
Right, right, we already got that behind us. And so, yeah, everything won't be fixed, the system will never, obviously, never be completely fixed. But they're all, I mean, I remember one time when I took a new job at Taco Bell, and I said, you know, struggling there because I can't ever get my apartment. And I used to run restaurants, supposedly ending up, and I go home and I didn't have any more. It's like, you just should get off of that, there's always gonna be more about your plate. There's no difference in the source, there's always gonna be something more we can do. But the transition to that is is the transition of going, right now, we're a hundred percent reactive. So generally, they're saying that, and a hundred percent reactive. I'd expect that being in two years, that that means sixty percent proactive, forty percent reactive. Does that sound reasonable?
It does, I mean, let us know everything about the law, but yes, so. The 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 biggest challenge that we face right now is growth. So I say we have around twelve hundred and fifty stations uh right now. By the time we get done with purpose code, we're gonna add another twenty just for that project. In two years, we might have fourteen stations. And and that changes the math on quickly we can get to the station. So there's a lot of moving parts here, but.
No, no, shouldn't. Because that's when you need to go back to us and say, I need another man. In order to maintain this goal, we can, to maintain that goal that we just told you we want.
So if we could, if you could, Mike, when you do that. This proactive maintenance reduces the reactive maintenance. I'm not saying that we have five hundred more stations, you know, twenty more stations here, twenty more stations there, may create a disaster.
I think you're almost saying that it's.
Yeah.
So Kevin, are you comfortable with that thing?
Yep, yep.
I'll send the same bandage to you.
Yeah.
I think so.
What if they want the services?
I want to say this, if I were, if I didn't miss anything in budget, it looks like right now we're budgeting somewhere around a hundred, hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. So there may not be as much money there to some people. And if we continue.
Across all departments, police, federal parks.
I think I got them all.
I would have guessed, I just had to guess, I'm gonna guess around a hundred and fifty, so, but I, that's just what.
Part of it is there's nothing in the parks to get, there's eight thousand dollars in equipment, so I don't know if that's. Vehicles and lawn boards, vehicles only or.
Shouldn't be.
Maybe I missed it, so it was quick, it's all you guys. So, there you go.
How many vehicles do we have in?
Uh, I just wanted to check that for sure, and I believe it is sixty five. It's a little less than seventy, close.
I got one last question.
The, the new communications special support directory to you, correct? Um, does he update our website team?
He is in the process of designing it, he's done some upgrades, but he's learning all the backend stuff. So it's his responsibility to update it as well.
Okay, so he, that and social media, he makes all of his social media, correct? Are you okay with him or how is that?
Um, I'm working closely with his good idea of how he works, but he's got scheduled work, has got with departments, um, piggybacked on some press releases, made of their own um fashion, so. Um, yeah, I can keep an eye on what he's doing, just as like, okay, this is how I would do it, but he's he's pretty much ground running on his own, so.
Yeah, I I think our social media fingerprint is improved.
Well, he has the time to do it.
A hundred percent, that was.
Then he started to work for closer to departments to start highlighting departments, like he just got some of the equipment he needed in, like he didn't quite have everything he needed to do, some of the stuff, so.
So one thing, Paul and I talked about this. I had a little bit of a law that couldn't be about asking legalities of weed, if they spoken in here, if they have it in here, if they spilled it in here.
I think I talked about about that, just things that we've highlighted, like how many, like a did you know series on the on the city, whether it's the public parks, police, or.
Okay.
Recently put some fireworks information on when it's holiday, so I know that's been discussed, like how we can.
Like, like to see that go. It's it was confusing for us to just talk about.
I had a bullet, read it, but once we figured it out, I think part of the issue in that, with that one in particular, is it's not just our, it's our ordinance that's what it says. And they've also got to talk to their own private attorney license, what it means for the state. And we don't ban everything from the state liquor, liquor companies. So. We are more permissive. We can't give permission by example.
Well, it was, it was hard to find the website. So I tried to be good to, one, for it to get into a spot it's key to locate me, and then in order to go out on social media, some type of data here's a pause.
No, there's a lot of departments that I know that's meeting, one of the big things.
On your website, it was something I had brought up, we're gonna bring it later, but um, I I suggest all our, all the aldermen, keep an eye on your website and look that people want to, that we kept updated. Some of us uh update our bios regularly, some of us don't have any, and so.
Yeah, I think less than anything we still need to look at.
If yours is there and it's it's old, you know, uh, you might wanna update it or just, again, we're trying to, we're. Listening to our younger aldermen talk about the social media stuff.
Fun. And we get old picture.
I do.
I appreciate getting called young, it's wild. Don't start missing those too.
All right, people on service, I have one question. On the development. The measurement. You mentioned works light, like what is that? So I'm contracted with a consultant that works with cities and county and school districts specifically for performance measures and those type of things. Um, so she and that, actually both partners come down in person and met with all the departments and kind of got to know the departments, although she's very familiar with the city government. Kind of seen what we were currently tracking and collecting, not just surface indicators, the part I got it, if you know in the budget, there's some things that I put in, that departments put in their section of the budget. So she went through those and worked individually, then with the departments to say, hey, this is what I think makes sense. So at the end of the day, I work with departments telling, this is the goal, this is, um, this is what you should for your, should measure. It's just kind of like what we talked about, not just what has done, but how do you tell your story and how do you know when you've become a capacity or different things like that? So she worked individually, um, the second time via Zoom or phone call, I believe, with all departments and then come back with recommendations. What she suggests we get rid of, what she suggests we add, and then also like what we suggest, the technology, or it's capable of, it should be looked at. So the department's got their list and they should be starting now.
Since you're gonna send a, a community to you.
I think I got that app sent to everybody, I think that's very cool. So I did get that the last couple of weeks, and so I sent something out, a picture from it. So anyway, then departments can just add what they wanted to that process, I thought was very positive. Like I said, I had a view that were like, oh, sure, I think like, yes, this is mandatory, but I even got some nice compliments from departments that were like, you know what? That was a good exercise. So I think hopefully with this next budget, you might see some difference in the difference with the departments on what they're starting to add to their kind of measures. Do we move on to the financial list, which I think will entail any other infrastructure or capital that we're gonna discuss? Um. We haven't already.
We'll start our air force work now.
Yeah.
What we need to develop, I want to talk about. Um, we have a reserve policy. Uh, for those that may not know, but it's 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 actually what you have to look for is you go to the ordinances on procurement, and then it's under appendix pay, which is the uh policy within the organization. And basically, in a nutshell, the city shall establish and maintain fund reserves, the fund, general fund, transportation fund, water fund, sewer fund, leasing fine fund, and grades, grand lays fund. Reference to the Jose B reserve policy as adopted by the Board of Aldermen in section two, one, six, exhibit X, so you go to the policy. Basically, what this tells us in there then is what percentage of reserve there has to be, um, whether it's in general, water, sewer, uh, leasing fine, grand lays, et cetera. My concern is the language is here, um, and that the board, um, uh, will be in violation of the ordinance next year. Um, uh, I believe that we need to change the ordinance, or we need to figure out what to do so we're not in violation of our ordinance. Because the ordinance in. Sure, Paul will read it in the same standing, is there's no budget. Basically, it says the water sewer fund is is my concern. Because basically, we will not be following the ordinance next year, because we're not gonna have our reserve at a hundred percent in the sewer. Now, York says we will. And 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 shame on me from eons ago when this was written, I really didn't, I really went, see, well, I just, hey, yeah, it sounds good.
We'll start the man to get it there, keep it there, and.
Yeah, and and.
A lot of change.
And there needs to be, you know, we just need to be aware of that, how we want to tell them. You know, me, I say we need to do something because the ordinance is there too, and I think we need to solve it. Because we're not gonna be there. I think, I think that, you know, there's lots of ways we can approach it. Majority of the board said, eh, we're just gonna be in violation of the ordinance, we don't care. I I I don't have, I don't wanna do that. But majority of the board decided, okay, if not, we're gonna, we're gonna come up with how we're going to change the ordinance or or whatever we're gonna do so that we can stand and try our constituents and say, no, we're not meeting our ordinance, but this is what our plan is, and according to our attorney, that's okay. Or do we need to change the ordinance to allow us to whenever we don't need it, we have responsibility to the board to develop a plan? I.e., we're gonna, we're going to increase it every year by a certain percent until we get to the hundred percent or whatever. I mean, somewhere or another, there's, this is very black and white. I mean, literally to the point that somebody could hold our feet to the fire that at January thirty, if we're not at a hundred percent, we gotta do something. I mean, that's what the ordinance says, there is no flexibility. And and that's carried into the letter of law, in my opinion. Yeah, I did hit Paul up with this earlier, but, you know, I just think that it's a little bit too strict because it doesn't give us as the, as a governing body, that room, that flexibility to be able to say, okay, as in, you know, and right now, we're in violation of our ordinance, we've been in violation for a number of months. Uh, but this is.
The first area that's all need to take a look at with everybody that. It's important to change it, change it. On a, on a career.
I think though, that I guess what I'm looking for the board is that there are, you know, if you if you believe me that we're in violation of it, what do we feel we want, what directions do we want to go? Do we want to be able to give the 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 board the flexibility, the date, come up with a plan, you know? What do we want to do there?
Do you feel like it was too reasonable? Was written too strict? Too tight?
I think that there could have been just a little bit of things added to it, but I guess, I, Gina, you remember?
It's very strict.
I I don't recall what was written, I'm sure I've gone to board.
Seventeen, we finally outcast, like seventeen.
Yeah, um, so I I I guess I, I just shame on me because I didn't realize it was as strict as it was because I would have opposed it. I didn't, I should have brought these things up at that point, that there should have been some flexibility given to the board, uh, but I I didn't.
We have a bullet, two weeks to give this kind of idea.
Well, he got read it, I I guess in order to give him.
Let's just find a time to sit down and talk about it. And have a look at it.
How does that puts in treasures of permanent, I mean, her, she's not yours, you volunteer, go on the money side of it, understanding our reserves and what entails.
Isn't the best way to cover bugs, change just a few simple words?
I'm sorry.
Of, of, six percent?
Yeah, you could, it sounds, it sounds like we could make it permissive, or we do, it sounds like, it's like saying it's a hard number, seven, seven.
I guess, I mean, it's this.
Could make a violation. We could make it aspirational.
Given the situation of the sewer department, be easier, given the situation. Gina, based on what you have done, what's your projection on when we would meet the sewer reserve requirement? Five years? Could you, you, you set your rates, you had to do some projections on that?
Yeah, I didn't bring my.
I thought, I thought you told me in five years.
I feel like I remember that.
Four to five, but I would say it's not much less, we've got some.
So, you know, I mean, if that's what we're, that's what we just established rates on.
I think the easy way is.
And our ordinance doesn't allow for us to do that.
Think the easy way is the law is to stop work, it should just change your, but, you know.
Turn it back to staff, find a new direct, comfortable, embrace.
This order is sixteen eighty five.
Uh, sixteen point eight five, yeah.
So these are target targets.
Same target.
Yes. Well, I'm not sure, there's also one in here, I'm trying to read off through all of these, it's something about sixteen percent of the operating and personnel, so I don't know, maybe that's what we have. But right, this target is going to December thirty first, twenty twenty three, with one of the white places.
So if I remember correctly, we wrote the policy here about J O A's best practices, then we applied some things to us. But at that time, the board wanted a goal, because at that time, we couldn't say we met anything. We did put some targets, but then by since we've met them and they're, you know, so. Yeah, they're dated because that that time is passed, that it was important to the board at the time to say, okay, we're gonna pass this, but we want something solidified and writing. That we're starting here, and this is, you know, we want general fund by twenty twenty three or whatever. And we did end up meeting some of those, a couple of them were funding. Oh, I don't, I've not read it, so the the shells and the can, Kevin, I'd have to read it, I don't know.
But to maintain.
But I will say the sewer, maybe even a little bit of water is probably not, if I would do the calculations. Now, that rolling free here, out of sixteen or twenty percent. Now that rolling free here, I heard sixteen or twenty percent of the open air, I, I kind of just a bunch of time trying to calculate that safer in that part. I've not read it in a while.
Let's make sure that we, right now, sorry, there's, there's not even a sewer fund targeted.
Should be, should be. And the sewer fund might not have a dollar to it, but it's got percentages.
Item B is said, the target level of water fund and the sewer fund shall be sixteen percent.
Okay.
Of all, yes, of all.
Okay, so that's the bomb.
Yeah, then there's the, and then.
Then there's a water fund, sort of, reserve target that ended two thousand twenty three with the class sewer. So that's okay.
Right, sewer is fine. If that time waters in our, we did to get out, that's why we put dollars.
So we're not sixteen percent when the two combined? Is this water answer?
Well, let me do the practice. So but sewer, sewer water lack a little because we have pulled down our reserves. So not only the reserve fund, but we've pulled down another of what we shouldn't have enough. Because not just beyond.
And I think there needs to be some flexibility where when we get that point, we can get the board have some, 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 uh, you know, some responsibilities and kind of get back to it, but not.
No, it's, it's a good catch. Just to show. So flexibility to use it when we need it. And then some type of process that dictates how quickly we can get back to where.
Situation, the existing board needs to develop that plan.
Yeah, I think both of them, once you reach into it, if I look at it. Maybe it's a simple thing, the target level. Well, it just says the target level shall be sixteen percent. So that's a target. So I don't know. I suppose we had that before.
I didn't have that party, but the target is generally. But fifth or sixth times. You can just spell it out.
Change target a little.
Being further in the financial list.
Why, why? Oh, I'm sorry. I missed it. It was under shirts. No, nothing under financial.
Uh, so fleet management, uh, Jack, we've packed. I didn't think there's, cause I, again, I really want to make sure we put a brain in the next vehicles, but I more top of our gears, especially that's down there taking care of it. But I, I think that person also could be the person's spirit putting in like fleet management plan. And hey, this car is, this vehicle is here right now. This is the state it's in. I projected in four years to be this, or in seven years to be this.
That's what we are right now.
We have a fleet management plan that we could pass.
Good. And, uh, Alderman Hoff, I apologize to you because what I said to you, I had forgotten that I had broken up the, I couldn't sit it all on one sheet anymore. So I only sent you the non-public work stuff. So tomorrow I will send the board the other page. So what you have is the thirty four vehicles that are non-public work. Yeah, okay. And then there's another, there's another page that is public work. And I, I, you know, for many years I had it all on one sheet and I forgot that it separated it. So I'll get you.
So my recommendation for Mike is not only spend the most up to date, but like Mike said, here in the next month, we'll be updating that. Double check the numbers, what status it is. And if it's in budget time, twenty percent is like, okay, here's what the scheduled replacements are. Here's our plan and it's still okay. So send me information on current plan and kind of the specific mile range, you know, the things that go into determiner by years. Should be in the next couple of months, then we'll be updating that for budget to go through then views.
All right, let's see. Let's fleet management now. We sell finances.
Well, that's, that was another time.
The finances kind of went, something about this.
Okay.
Expands the capital.
Number seven down below is fleet management. So I've been waiting.
Sorry, maybe we do.
Okay, here we go.
I was just going to ask, uh, I know all the Ross I've talked about this and I'm, and I'm not advocating for this. But I do know a lot of other cities, I've talked to Camden about this, that, that rental. Camden does another city do it. We have a vehicle in the home and somebody from leasing was talking about after twenty miles, you turn it in and I don't know what to talk about with it. Say, did you get credit back? That's a good thing. They say, yada, yada, yada. So I'll, I'll, I'm asking. If we get that from enterprise, I mean, sometime in this.
What kind of deja vu?
Deja vu. We've done it twice.
Done a lot of it too.
Right before we were tackling this, first economy would break the end vehicles pre-COVID. Like I was, our Camden did join and we did not, remember? Those two communities joined the program and we did not. Now here in three, four years later, after we've been through it, would be very interesting to see. It's like I was, our Camden, you know, what happened during that crazy time when vehicles, so if it's time, Mike's really the one that's serving that.
And, and, and even if we just do that, if you do or something.
The enterprise guy still emails me every six months. He is very, very, uh, aggressive.
So it sounds like it's time to reden that, it's what you're saying, reden that.
Take it like, doesn't work, doesn't work, but they can show us our numbers.
Happy to do it.
Maybe, do you, do you have to know if Camden, like those are happy?
It costs more, but they're.
Oh, but I think, are they more happier?
Are they physically responsible?
Well, I, I, I don't know enough about it to. Oh, first I talked to you, you know, if it's on wise. He tried to sell.
Honestly, we should accommodate that.
I don't know. This is. It destroyed.
The judge will let say that we need for a maintenance person.
Possibly. I don't know.
Now, my recommendation, and I know why I'm getting into this later. I don't want to keep harping on this. Want to bring it up and bring them in, renew the data and they'll do an assessment first, you know, kind of just like they did a few years ago. Um, but now we were entertaining the idea, I didn't want to break up the city. He's in other words, I'm like, no. Because yeah, they want the police cars because that's where we made money, but what about our public works and our parks and our airports? You know, if we're going to do it, then, then boat us citywide. You know, I thought that was only fair, you know, your building and your public parks and, you know, there's a reason they only want the police side, you know, money. It's like, maybe it worked financially for all our trucks and all our trucks regardless of the department. And the other departments don't need as much specialized equipment. So anyway, that was one thing that I I was early twenty nineteen, eighteen or nineteen, and I'm like, no, I want to see the assessment for all city here. You know, especially vehicles, not just a single item department.
It works better for non-police, but they can do both. And we'll just do everything and we'll see what, what everybody thinks.
My, my, can I request you send all the board copies of the student management program?
Yes, because I, I saw that to be.
Every year budget, we always argue about replacing your vehicles, but we have a plan that we agreed on at the board. Get every, we don't want to follow. So that's the bud, begin on. I hope that we want you a license or justice, but now you got it and it improved, must stick that haggle every year budget will be a little bit.
So I would agree with that, but I think this is the place for me to act.
Because we should be doing it before budget and not during.
Changing, then let's change it. Right. I said the last.
So change it. Let's just get more information out of the paper. Boadot's pro, uh, policy is hundred seventy five thousand dollars, hundred seventy five thousand miles away. Here. Okay. Um, and talk, had the opportunity to talk to a guy that Airbrook and Kansas City, what it's called, but it's basically they got trucks out on the road every day and rush hour to, uh, help voters, you know, so that if you get stopped in the lane on I seventy, we're going to go help get your car off and maybe get your tow truck. Get what they call it.
Traffic assistance.
Yeah, it's kind of a traffic assistance. They got an A forty in the escape speed. Branson. He goes, Richard, it's a hundred seventy five thousand. He goes, I've got three quarters on there. Ford F one fifty, three hundred twenty five thousand miles on, he says, I think I'm good. So when we're looking at replacing vehicles at six, ten years or a hundred thousand mile, I feel like that's it. I think that we should change the policy. I think that policy is changed to, I don't, I don't have a problem with maybe ten years depending, maybe, maybe it's fifteen, but but I think that number, the miles should be a hundred fifty thousand at minimum. Boadots gets along with it just fine. Okay. Um, and like, you know, by the way, three quarters on pickup, it's not a little bit, maybe explorers or stands, but we've gone to more SUVs and they've got some new spans compared where we were suddenly ten years ago. And I just think that this hundred thousand mile policy law, nothing wrong with it. I think that we're not that. You got one thing that says often like that, like, I think that it aligns with that.
Yeah, like fifteen years are flipping up. It's either one of those parts. But, but I think right now, ten thousand.
All the police is six, six years kind of a vaccine. And on the non-police, non-secure. It's ten years now.
And why not? We, but we have differences for standard vehicles versus police vehicles.
Yeah.
These, these vehicles are hard. Like that's why initially it was a state across the board, five years. Then it got split into different years for lease and then all of a sudden.
But when you say difference between police and not, you got to understand our police vehicles and the ambulance is emergency, emergency equipment.
Yeah.
Right? Our public works department is emergency equipment. Okay. They don't run red lights and sirens, but there, it's an emergency if they, if they have a problem getting there and they break down. Right? And then we have our non-emergency or non-one, but, but reliability, you know, is, is very, very important. Uh, you know, there's a number of things considering this fleet management that we need to think about. If we get into the business of that, that's going to be real simple. They're, they're got, they know when to, to, to sell that vehicle. And, and they're going to sell it at the opportune time when they can make money on it. We have to understand if we are buying the vehicle, we should be following that same plan. Because that's the opportune time for us to sell before we get into maintenance and something we have to understand is that we are buying the vehicle for less money than what enterprise can. Cause we are getting state bids at state price, first state price. So when we are buying it, when they're buying the vehicle for thirty thousand dollars, we're buying it for twenty five thousand. So if we turn that vehicle at the same time when they say to turn it, then we're making bigger profit off of our used equipment, which takes our new equipment and drives the price down. So we have to understand that we're not the typical guy out there, the, the, the Kevin Rucker, who's just a guy who just buys vehicles and sells them. We're as a city buying those things with a city with a state bid price and no sales tax. So our cost of procurement is way down here. So when the sale of that vehicle is the same for the city as bids for all of us up here, our profit is greater. And therefore that drives the cost of our replacement vehicle down more. So, and it gives us reliability. It gives us, you know, windshield appearance. Uh, which is you then mentioned Justin for the, you know, the morale or for the, for Brandon, you know, uh, I will tell you, it, it does a lot for morality plays. You know, so there's more than just the, the looking at the dollar, bottom line dollar. There's a lot of, lot of other reasons, a lot of other good perks, uh, you know, to, to, to have a, a proactive program rather than re.
Well, I agree with you. I think you kind of discussed what I was saying. I'm saying that fifteen and, and or a hundred fifty thousand, it's on cap. That's if, if you can, if you want to bring it up, when it's six years old, you could justify. But the board said yes or no? Listen, I, I say this every year and I still, I still don't feel like I'm getting my point across. What we have here is a guideline. I will never bring you, and, and please, if, stop me if you think I have. I'll never bring you a vehicle that doesn't have a problem that's over a hundred thousand miles. It, we're, we've got at least six different vehicles in our fleet right now that have more than a hundred thousand miles. We don't have any plans to replace. The guideline is that those three, those three policies, six years or a hundred thousand miles for police is when we start to look at things and say, okay. Are we okay? Can we keep using this vehicle or we at a point where we really need to start thinking about? Removing it. Think about what you guys approved this year. One of them had a bed frame. We had to get rid of that. We all know that. Um, we're, you know, we, just a few years ago, we put a brand new bed on a vehicle that had a hundred thousand miles on it. And that vehicle is still being used in, in public works today. Police are very and we need them to be able to catch bad guys and they need to catch bad guys. So it, it is important. But there is common sense that it's being used when these recommendations are brought. If anybody that doesn't believe me can come sit down with me, Zach, the chief, and we will go through the process that we go through every year. When we decide whether or not we want to move these little yellow boxes around on, on the board. Um, if the board wants to, wants to change those rules, I am all for it. Do whatever the board wants me to do, but please do not, I, I feel like there's the perception here that, that, uh, we say, oh, my God, five thousand miles, let's get rid of it. Doesn't matter. It's not what we're trying to do. That is a, that is just a benchmark for us to say, okay, now that we're getting, now, now we're in, we're in the six digits here. We'll start making sure that we are really looking at things and making sure that we have a vehicle that's going to be reliable for us during this budget year or during future budget year. And then last but not least, if I'm being asked to evaluate enterprise, I mean, the whole reason this was put in place was because we didn't want enterprise. So if we do want enterprise, and again, I know that's something that we will all have to debate once we, uh, go through that process again, then this goes away. Because we'll be handing over the keys to our fleet management to a third party. And when they call me and they say, mine, you bought this vehicle for twenty seven thousand dollars three years ago. It's got forty thousand miles on it. I could sell it for twenty seven thousand dollars more now, three years later, and drive one back on the lot for you. Then we won't be, then the hundred thousand mile thing, you know, doesn't even work anymore because that's not the business model that we have, me, when we have a lease process. So I just want to put that out there and make sure that everybody understands where we're going. In my mind, if you're going to ask for us to research this, then it doesn't really do us any good to really, to really dial into this until we figure out whether or not enterprise is the right path.
Well, everything you said, that I continue, I would just say that in the future. So I know Richard brought the seven, I have to, but I do approve of it. There needs to be a cost first replacement, cost first repair. And some vehicles like the, the bed frame is a perfect. That's not. That's automatic replacement. And that's where I do think that the ending, it's an extra voice for you that's as special as this is. Hey, cause I asked my buddy who did that, he's like, dude, John, it's got a bed frame, it's a size tracks. So I think that that's something that could help your position with us if you bought so here's the cost replacement, here's the cost repair. Here's why I support which of the two you's.
Assume we do. And, and we do, we, during the budget workshops, we all, I, when we put that all out there, we say this, what's wrong with this vehicle? And this is why we want to, uh, replace it and we provide the maintenance history for the vehicle so that the board has all the information that they need to make an educated decision on whether or not they want to get rid of that vehicle.
Does enterprise include all our fleet?
Well, that's a decision that. Well, that's a decision that we will, that the board will.
They offer, dump trucks, fuel trucks, whatever you said, et cetera, or specialized?
Specialized, we, we had, we had kicked out previously because it's just not, it's just not cost effective. Uh, but, but, you know, anything from an F, uh, I wanna say an F two fifty. Down to even your, um, detective vehicles and your police vehicles can be included.
So they'll take part, probably, for all?
Mostly. What about all?
Well, I would agree on your grade, Mayor, I'm not in favor of enterprise, just like I was just.
Yes, but it's, it's frustrating, and I do work all against it, we don't wanna let him talk, let him come in and talk, and then give you your argument. So.
I have a baby argument right now, I'm reiterating it, and I'm saying since getting before, I have been against it, we've been down to throw it a couple of times. Same way that we've been down the road many times with waters, and I think it's a waste of time for us to do it, I think.
Thank you for your input.
Yes, sir.
So, third question, one, first of all, what is called Kansas City, it's called Kansas Scout, um, you've got two, three bands, right?
I'm sorry?
You got two or three bands for army shoes, it's kind of violation.
Well, my pool.
Hang on.
Hundred eleven of my, my.
Okay, and so, all I can say is, is, I, this is, the fleet replacement cost. Six years, a hundred thousand miles, if it's control, and ten years, a hundred thousand miles, if it's not, not police, right? By the way, police is, is awful, it's not just, um, broadly.
No, 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 we, we put the, uh, detective vehicles in it.
You put those on, yeah. All I can say is, I think that, I don't have a problem, wanna consider it at six years or ten years, but a hundred fifty thousand miles on my heart is a period of reason. And I realize that you're not coming to us necessarily a hundred thousand miles automatically, but I don't know that we should be, be even assessing that until a hundred fifty thousand. The energy just shouldn't be there, because I don't think there's any significant cost between a hundred and a hundred fifty, aren't there? Throw vehicles for a long time, different with the possible maintenance and repairs for, between a hundred and a hundred fifty thousand miles, it's tires, that as well. Well, yeah, but we're gonna have that, we'll be driving it zero to a hundred, or a hundred to a hundred fifty. So we'll just see what happens when we get out there, make the motion lose from two hundred fifty thousand miles to a hundred.
I just have consensus. You can do it in consensus direction.
Okay, so what, what's a consensus direction?
Well, like I've been asked here, is it the director of staff to redo this, with certain things for the board to consider, it's gonna be motion flying.
Well, it doesn't have to be a direction of the staff, it can not be just an ordinary break up, a motion to revise. Policy.
We can have a motion today.
We can't do it here, because it's gotta be on the agenda.
You can have it in general.
But I'm sending you the current plan, I'm sending you the information, and then you guys all sign it, hoping that a upcoming board meeting, you need to address.
Alright, I don't care, here, because. Yes, I think we're all up to tweaking it, but I, when we start this way, we've got some in place, we've had it in place for a while, we can't fight.
Well, this way, these, I've come a section before, but then, and we've got still a month of policy before everybody dies in the budget, if anything, issues also. Or different correction.
I don't really get it wrong.
I'll send out the existing sheets to everybody tomorrow. And then, uh, I'll begin doing the research that I've been directed to do, and we'll see where that goes. Right, and so we wanna put a, 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 a take action on the first meeting in August, and do you need that, or the funding?
I need it by Monday, it's Monday.
Next Monday, okay. So.
Is that all, like, that's all?
That's all, I have to leave talks. I'm not running to you, but if you want me to, you trigger that.
Well, I, is there any item that we have not discussed that needs further? A financial list for those topics that are under capital investment that we've not had direction?
Uh. Question for you, under ordinances, under, under ordinances, very last item, I think, number two, other areas of focus.
So that's just a carryover from last year, obviously something open ended, because there may be some more in section, we had a, um, direction last year, or. One of last year's under good governance was continue to enhance. Continue to, I think that was taken on, I thought I carried over last year, because there's always seemed to be something in part of the block that's continued review. You know, maintain current work instances, there's for past years, so I just left that to carry over. There's nothing that hits that topic, and that's fine.
We can, we, we work, yes.
No, I don't think we do.
We wrap, we pre-adopt, ratified mission statement prior to budget every year, so I have a clean mission statement for the next, for the budget year.
Remember that being part.
So somewhere in the fall, somebody, or Devon, will be bringing up the.
Mission statement, don't we also, part of budget prior to being, uh, ratified on the org chart?
The org chart is part of the budget document that you, it's adopted.
There hasn't been, there's, there's been some discussion, uh. Between. Planning, four to different entities, should be.
So when I. No, I, I, at this time, I personally don't have any recommendations, there's. Tweets with org chart, I knew that is just part of the personnel. But what I had said about sometimes building and planning come together under a community director sometimes, and we're not set up that way, but. Then I don't know what other times.
Well, they're just, they've observed this, with the addition of a communication specialist, long specialist, policies, spots. City engineer, practice condition, maybe they add.
City engineer is, that was in this year's last budget, and so is communication specialist and all that, it's all in the last pretty org chart.
It's more, it's, it's. I'm just thinking up a lot of.
Now, that was.
Top, is that, do we have that at this seat, or the same?
I have a question for the board. What do we want to do, board, direct staff, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, on the outlook? Just gonna continue to sit back and just let things happen, and see what happens? I, I think that, well, we can, there's lots of things we could do.
There's.
You know, I just.
That gave me a little update, uh, we actually met with, uh, uh, new realtor, over a long, long time, in Kansas City, they're continually assigned to it. Uh, we also met with a person signing properties, who, she seemed to be very active, when we sell it down, the other person wasn't. Um, several months ago, when they had some problems, I, I was trying to go out and inspect it, and there was a bunch of failures, or a set of, they don't want a background. Uh, that has been dropped right now, because the, it's not like the, the, the fire, that has passed, so. We can save those, and you'll get something.
Yes, been recent, uh, the notice of violation for eighty, um, items, so that they, eighty-one says. Eighty-one, eighty-one. My side, side, so. Big Joshua.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there are a couple over there.
Well, they only have like thirty-something days or so.
They've been thirty days, trying to get us a plan of actions, and we, so they're within that time, it's been out two weeks or so, it's back to. Partly through up the period, partly offline. It's one, five hundred dollar thing, for, for violation. Forty thousand, five hundred.
A couple that they do have some very serious entry, interest, and as well, it's, uh, I've seen documentation from Lord Act on. Um, hospitality study that come on, so I think they do have some various potentials. And they requested information, again, that I, I knew Lord Act had done, um, in hospitality and study and stuff, so.
We've made here.
I'm good with that, I just, I just hadn't heard nothing, and I thought, well, I haven't either, you know, maybe there's something we could do, I don't really know what to do, but. The only way we determine what to do is we all get our brains together. Great, it sounds like that.
Yes, yeah.
And the reason we did that was, uh, four months ago, I was, my first, I'm very directly, we don't owe any money on it, we're just gonna make money on it, we're not gonna be fresh from the selling process. So that's when I went out, and if you remember on the paper, they said it was a water. Almost a five, five, there. It respected, and, and, uh, and I was getting on in pretty, pretty, but they, they, it's so.
So, you know, the, the other half, had some really good meetings, and they do seem motivated, but. At the same time, we wanted them to understand that if it's, if you're not gonna sell it, yeah, now, then they gotta do something with it. And it's, it's not something that they, you know, the, the last attitude we got was, we'll just let it sit, and we wanted to make clear that that's not. So, we hope they find a buyer who wants to do something with it, we would love to work with them, we've been very clear that we're. Happy to work with them, we've got experience doing re, big redevelopment projects like this, we'd love to, you know, be a partner with them, but letting it sit down.
I'm just curious, um, have you been in a situation, let's say they, they get by two months, forty thousand, it's, it's bad. Quarter million dollars, whatever that is. What have they just done? You know, you follow.
Take it forward, forward. Can't, can't threaten me with a good time, alright. Sorry, it's two days, one. You hold, I don't know where it's. Second, it's better roll. After. Is. It's process of moving at the pace it's gonna be.
Anything else, not.
Is there nothing to?
Motion to. Thank you, girl.
We can roll.
You're done.
All those in favor? Ah, go drink your beer.